This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmember Stagley.
Here.
Finley.
Levinson.
Present.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Witt. Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
Thank you. We have Boy Scout troop 565 here and they would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, in solid. Please bring in the following in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now they would like to make a presentation to us, so go ahead, troop 565.
What we have made over the past, or what we have been doing is merit badge citizenship in the community. And here we have made a poster of the Longmont Recreation. There's different soccer fields in Longmont, like Longmont High School, Sandstone Park, Sunset Middle School, and biking trails, like Lykan's Gulch Trail and Spring Gulch Number Two. There's also football fields. Football fields in Longmont would include Longmont High School, Sandstone Park, Silver Creek High School, and Sunset Middle School. Basketball in Longmont, there's many probably. High schools and middle schools, YMCA, Rec Center, and Life Bridge Church. Public art, we have the part of that train at the library. We have the Vance Brand Airport statue thing. And we have the faces that are on the bike trails that you have to look very closely to find. So, that was our poster. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at the final call, public invited to be heard, on any items at the end of the meeting. Next, we will have the minutes from February 14th, 2012 meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? May I have a motion? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. I would move the approval of the minutes for February 14th, 2012.
All right. All in favor? It passes seven to zero. Furtan, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you'll need a scorecard almost to keep track of all these tonight, but I'll try to make them simple. You have before you a substitute resolution R-2012-09. This pertains to the Collins Property Acquisition, and you will substitute that one with what you have in your packet. You also have before you tonight information regarding your retreat outlines that will be discussed when you bring up item 11B. And then because our new schedule sometimes has us putting out the agenda so that the council has it in advance, we don't have everything quite catch up. We have before you tonight, under item 4A, we have two additional items that we're going to request that you make a motion to put into your consent agenda. And those are ordinance 2012-18 and resolution 2012-10. So, Mayor and Council, I would ask that you move to revise your agenda and place those as item 9E and 9F of your consent agenda.
Councilmember Levinson.
Mayor, I'd like to move the agenda revisions as suggested by City Manager Pedro.
All right, it's been first and second, and let's vote. It passes seven to zero.
Mayor, I do not have a report tonight, and so your special reports are the next items on your agenda. And Jeff Friesner is going to introduce the first item, which would be 6A from CHIL.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Friesner, Recreation Manager. And I am pleased to introduce an item tonight that is near and dear to my heart. The ice rink has been in operation for a number of years. These folks from CHIL, Citizens Helping Ice in Longmont, are here to continue their ongoing support of the ice rink. And with that, I'd like to introduce Jake Van Kessel, who is the Chair of the CHIL Committee. Thank you.
Well, thank you for a few minutes tonight. It's myself, again, Jake Van Kessel, the Director of CHIL, and brought out some fellow CHIL members tonight, and we wanted to officially present council with a check that CHIL donated this year for $1,500 to the city. That went for nets, skates, equipment for the kids, pretty much anything that Mark Mann, the rink director, saw fit. So, we're more than happy to do this, and we appreciate the continued support from council and from the city. And again, thank you, and we're very much happy to do it.
Thank you for all you do.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, now those of you who are shorter, and you know who you are. Even, you know, some of us even with heels. Okay, one, two, three, two. There's one more, stay right there. One more. Okay, and one, two, three, two. Thank you.
Over one. I feel like... I'm Johnny Elway lined up behind the garden.
Mayor, the next item is your proclamation, and Tom Erniotis will come down and receive that. And I think he may have a few remarks to make before you read the proclamation.
Thank you, Gordon. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tom Erniotis, Director of Longmont Power and Communications. If you've seen some of our vehicles over the last few weeks, or seen some of our correspondence, you might notice that our logo has begun to change a little bit. If you look up at the monitors, this is what our original logo looked like. And over the last few weeks, this is what the logo is beginning to look like. And that's because this year, Longmont's celebrating its 100-year anniversary as a municipality that was able to own and operate its own electric utility. A hundred years ago, acquiring the right to provide electricity for Longmont did not come easy. The incumbent electric service provider at the time did everything it could to prevent the city from delivering electricity to its own citizens. And it was March 7th, 1912, when the city finally won a final district court injunction suit and was allowed to have a municipal electric utility. The city won this, you guys were good. The city won this right due to the bold vision of our community and the tenacity of a group of local citizens, including citizens that actually put their own money in to help start this electric utility back 100 years ago. And these citizens quickly saw the benefits of their hard work. With municipal power, Longmont could obtain more electricity at lower costs and tailored to the needs of this community. For example, on Mondays, the generators were actually run all day instead of just during the evening hours for lighting. And that enabled the residents here to begin to actually enjoy some of these new-fangled electric washing machines that the folks in Denver had been enjoying for years. And today, we continue to see high levels of service and benefit to the community. Our rates are among the lowest in Colorado, and this provides our businesses that choose to locate here a significant competitive advantage. In fact, we'd have to raise our commercial rates 47% and our residential rates 60% before we would even reach the average here in the state of Colorado. Having all utility staff located here locally in the city enables us to provide highly responsive and quality customer service. I think residences and businesses here have learned to count on our reliable power. In fact, LPC is a four-time award winner of American Public Power Association's RP3 Award, and that's an award for reliability, safety, and system improvements. And speaking of safety, today, our utility has gone 1,750 consecutive days without a lost time accident. And I got to tell you, in our industry, that is unheard of. And we work very hard, and we focus on safety, and we're very proud of that result. Excuse me. And all these benefits are really the direct result of some very smart, very innovative decisions made by this community, hard work by some dedicated staff, and great support from our public officials. Now, what we've done is we've developed a short video. And in the video, it talks about the beginnings of our electric utility and how the work we do today affects the community. The video is going to be, going to start playing, I think, on Channel 8 in March. Today and tomorrow. Okay. And it's available online on our website. Anybody can play it. And we actually have it here tonight, and we're going to take your time to actually show it, if it's okay with you.
Sure, great.
As we now look back on our 100-year anniversary of public power here in the city of Longmont, we're extremely grateful for the bold vision of our predecessors. By first establishing the utility and then making a lot of the right decisions along the way that we are reaping incredible benefits from, and building the foundation so that we can continue in that legacy, to continue to look for ways to provide better and better value to Longmont citizens well into the future. It really all began in 1907. A lot of people in the community began to be unhappy with the cost and availability and the quality of the service that was being provided by the incumbent service provider at the time, which was a private company based in Denver, Colorado. There are 63 citizens that pulled their money together to build the Longmont Electric Service Company. The city was actually limited at the time due to state law that they could not bond out anything over $46,000 to structure the project. Quickly became apparent that $46,000
Now, Longmont has been very fortunate to have a public power utility since 1912. They did open a hydropower plant near Lyons that provided at that time all of the power for the city of Longmont. Standing here in front of Longmont's hydroelectric plant, built back in 1911 to 1912, the basic idea of the hydro plant is to convert the mechanical energy and the potential energy of a high-pressure water source to an electrical energy. We do that by running that water through a Pelton-style turbine, which is really just kind of a water wheel enclosed inside of a machinery case. That water power is converted to rotational energy, and we spin a generator with that turbine that's powered by the water source. Electricity needs have changed a great deal since the beginning of public power in Longmont in 1912. Back then, about the only power was electric lights, but many different electric appliances have been added over the years, from washing machines. Electric stoves were another innovation that was introduced shortly after the development of public power in Longmont. Over the many years since then, Longmont Power has grown and changed in many ways, but it remains a key part of Longmont's community.
That spirit, I think, of independence and innovation continued for many years, even up into the 1970s, when the city of Longmont and three other Colorado cities realized that there would be a lot of advantages to combining resources. And in the 1970s, Longmont Loveland, Four Collins, and the town of Estes Park got together and formed Platte River Power Authority.
The foresight in the 70s of the partnership that was formed by Platte River Power Authority with the four cities truly has been a gift to this community in so many ways.
Platte River's role in helping the city of Longmont is to provide high-voltage wholesale electricity to the city. Platte River does that by running various power generation resources. We still are a recipient of federal hydropower. Platte River invested about 10 years ago in some wind generation resources up in Wyoming. The bigger facilities, however, are the Yampa Project that is over in Craig, Colorado. And then back in the late 70s, early 80s, we built the Broad Energy Station up north at Four Collins. So it's the combination of those generation resources that helps deliver electricity to Longmont. In addition, Platte River operates all of the high-voltage transmission systems.
And it was, I think, a pretty far-forward vision for the cities that they made that commitment back then.
When companies here of the low cost of our electricity compare to other communities are usually astonished, and we will win hands down because of that, not only reliability, but the low cost of power.
This graph shows the very top bar is Longmont. All the green bars are municipal electricity. The yellow bars are rural co-ops, and the red bars are investor-owned. And this line is showing where Longmont's rates compared to everybody else for residential service. Everything to the right of this line is showing how much higher others are than Longmont.
Seagate, Longmont, I've worked in different municipalities and in different states, and I've had some of the same responsibilities. And I have to say that LPC has been a great resource, a great partner in managing and understanding our power usage and providing us the right information that allows us to use that power more efficiently and effectively.
Our administrative staff greets and talks and helps with all kinds of customers, whether people call on the phone or they walk in our office, they will help them with all types of things: energy rebates, some of our discounts, planning for energy audits. They'll help in whatever way customers need.
In the last 10 years that I've been here, we've had a lot of technology advancements that we've actually implemented into the system. And have to compliment, you know, our department and the previous engineers that have been here, because they really have established a foundation for us to improve upon. The SCADA system is a supervisory control and data acquisition system. The system is computers talking to computers that monitor the entire system and provides us an immediate look at what's happening. It immediately notifies us when power outages happen. What also has improved a lot with the newer technology is we've actually detected problems on our system that in the past we may have missed. So that kind of a feedback and real-time response system and alarming that it gives us, we actually have prevented outages before they took place. That has been a huge advancement.
We actually started an energy management program in 1992, where we really started getting heavily involved with the representatives through Longmont Power and Communications, and that's pretty much where we are today. In 2009, we actually participated with Longmont Power and Communications and the city of Longmont. We partnered with them on a grant, a DOLA grant, where we did energy efficiency projects. We actually touched almost 20 schools within our district within the city of Longmont with that grant, upgraded a lot of lighting. It was a great, a great thing for both of us.
In the late 1990s, the electric utility was looking for ways to wire a SCADA system. The city decided to go ahead and put in advanced fiber optics to establish that communication link. They also knew that that fiber optic installation was going to be capable of a lot more. So the city really had a vision that not only would that infrastructure play a big role in advancing the capability of the utilities in the city operations, but they were well aware that that fiber optic network could be used as the basis for a complete citywide fiber-to-home network. Now that the citizens have passed ballot question two A, essentially, the handcuffs are off for our community to fully utilize this phenomenal asset. For one thing, the city could partner now with a private partner. We might be able to work with a developer in the future that wants to future-proof this subdivision and begin to deploy fiber optics in the construction of that subdivision, which has happened in the past, and we haven't really been able to work with them because of the state law. There's a myriad of things that the city could look at and do.
Our meter reading staff are out every day in the rain, in the heat, in the snow, and they're reading 66,000 electric and water meters each month.
The accuracy of all of our electric meters is very important to us. We want to be fair to our customers as well as being fair to ourselves. Although we are a nonprofit organization, we still need to have revenue to do day-to-day business.
So safety is a big concern for LPC due to the extreme hazards that we are exposed to. My part in safety is to try and keep safety as interesting as possible, and that sometimes is a challenge. We conduct 31-hour safety meetings every year. We also do job site safety inspections. We are currently at 1,611 days, which relates to just under four and a half years, a little bit over 2,700,000 worker hours that we've gone without a lost time accident, and that's pretty significant in our industry.
No matter what the community event, you will see Longmont Power and Communications right out there in front, whether it's providing education to our young people about the true power of electricity, or providing financial support at community events, they are there. They're part of our community in every aspect, and I'm so proud of the service that they provide to our citizens.
So bottom line, we're here to serve our customers, who are also our owners, and provide them the best value possible.
The public decides how we do our business. They decide if we're doing a good job or not. To this day, that's 100 years later, that's incredible to me.
I'm proud to say congratulations to Longmont Power and Communications for a century of service to this community. Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you for taking the time to view that video. I also want to mention that in that little bag of goodies you guys got, there is a commemorative coin that has got a tremendous amount of detail and symbolism in there. And there's also, on that DVD, you've got a copy of that video, but there's also a shorter video that really highlights and talks about all the symbols and the detail on this commemorative coin and what it means to Longmont and LPC. And these commemorative coins are available to the public for purchase for, what are they, $8 apiece? Yeah. And information is on our website about how to get ahold of these. So Mayor, with that, I think we've taken enough of your time, and I understand that you have a proclamation proclaiming March 7th, 2012 as Longmont Public Power Day, and I'd be honored if at this time you'd make that.
All right, so proclamation designating, actually, it says March 7th, but it's actually February 28th as Longmont Power, Public Power Day. Whereas Longmont Power Communications, the city's municipal electric utility, is marking a century of service to the Longmont community in 2012, and whereas for the last 100 years, Longmont Power and Communication has provided the community with low electric rates, strong, reliable, and responsive local, high-quality customer service, and whereas, according to an industry survey conducted by the Colorado Association of Mummiscible Utilities in 2011, Longmont Power and Communication has provided the community with some of the lowest business and residential electric rates in Colorado, so that the utility would need to raise its business rates by 47% and its residential rates by 60% just to reach the state averages in those categories. And whereas on March 7th or slash February 28th, or okay, it was March 7th, 1912, after much struggle with the incumbent electric provider, Longmont citizens obtained the legal right to form their own municipal utility and to deliver electricity to the residents and businesses in Longmont. Now, therefore, I Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim March 7th, 2012 as the Longmont Public Power Day in Longmont. I invite all citizens in the community to be aware that Longmont Power and Communications is dedicated to serving the Longmont community for its next century and beyond with the same dedication it has shown in the last 100 years. Thank you.
Yes, if you just get in a little bit, I think I can do it.
Hey, Mayor, I'd just like to add to what's already been said. I think that video pretty well showed that, once again, this is a team of great dedicated employees working to provide these services and a team of other partners, other cities and other entities that all make this possible. And it just shows teamwork is essential in everything we do.
Thank you, Gordon. I would totally agree with you. We've got an awesome electric utility, group of people, and most incredible employees, and a great Platte River Power Corporation, so things are great. So first call of public invited to be heard, and please remember to state your name and address, is Ryan Krageran.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. My name is Ryan Krageran. I live at 615 Lincoln Street here in beautiful Old Town Longmont, 80501. I'm here tonight to talk about fast tracks, and I'm also president of Bicycle Longmont, so I'm here representing Bicycle Longmont. We read the article in the paper today, and I took a little look at the packet that was posted online. And Bicycle Longmont, also, we talked with our members as well, so where they were falling on this issue as well. Essentially, what we're looking at is pretty much everybody wants to train. You know, I think anybody who has ever been to a major metropolitan area with a light-rail transit system, with a subway, with commuter rail, everybody likes to train. My daughter, five years old, she loves trains. You know, everybody loves trains. Even if you've been on Space Mountain, people love trains. So I'm not saying that this line would be like Space Mountain by no way, but the lines would be great if they were that long, so. But with Bicycle Longmont, what we're looking for is we want more people to be able to use transit and to be able to use a functioning, efficient transit system. And so the three different options that were laid out before you, basically, in my opinion, look like it's raise taxes and do it now, or put it on hold and raise taxes later, or we're basically going to be doing a bus rapid transit system between here and Boulder where the train would most likely end. And so with Bicycle Longmont, what we're looking at is we want the train, we would like to not have our taxes raised for that. If we do move forward with a bus rapid transit system, what we would like to see is a model that was instituted at the University of Minnesota, linking the Minneapolis campus with their St. Paul campus, which they had a bus rapid transit system that also incorporated the use of bicycles. So they had a dedicated bike lane, and so it would make a direct line from Longmont to Boulder. And so if that is the route that ultimately is chosen, then we would like to be able to have bikes included in that decision. But first, it's we'd like to see the train come to Longmont. I think most of the people in Longmont would like to see that as well. So thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, Mary Blue. Followed by Fred Gabriel.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mary Blue. I live at 1460 Ajax Way, and I'm still beating the RTD drum after all these years. Just a little bit of history, I collected the most signatures of anybody in the whole metro area for the petition in 2004 when we went to the ballot. And I still remember getting signatures from people who said, elderly friends of mine who said, "I'll sign this for you, but am I still going to be alive when it happens?" And all humor unintended, I'm now worrying if I'm still going to be alive before this thing happens. A lot that Ryan said I would endorse, I think the train should come to Longmont. Now, if in the long run, BRT proves to be much more economical and we get a good system here before I die, then I might feel differently. I have to tell you, I was on the phone this afternoon with some folks from Westminster. They are very committed to the rail line, and in their case, they have commercial and real estate developments already in the works that are even underway physically that depend on having a rail station in Westminster. They are a big ally, as is Lewisville, who doesn't have the greatest of connection on 36th for their downtown area. Their station area is planned. I'm a little bit, much as I like Boulder, I'm a little bit suspect, because they really don't care now, their council doesn't care about the rail, because they have the turnpike and they can put bus rapid transit on that. I know there are cost overruns with the price of steel, the recession has caused revenues from RTD to go down, and the railroads are not being as cooperative as we once hoped. And they have a lot more things that make their costs more, so it's really... And all humor unintended, I'm now worrying if I'm still going to be alive before this thing happens. A lot that Ryan said I would endorse, I think the train should come to Longmont. Now, if in the long run BRT proves to be much more economical and we get a good system here before I die, then I might feel differently. I have to tell you, I was on the phone this afternoon with some folks from Westminster. They are very committed to the rail line, and in their case, they have commercial and real estate developments already in the works that are even underway physically that depend on having a rail station in Westminster. They are a big ally, as is Lewisville, who doesn't have the greatest of connection on 36th for their downtown area. Their station area is planned. I'm a little bit, much as I like Boulder, I'm a little bit suspect because they really don't care now, their council doesn't care about the rail, because they have the turnpike and they can put bus rapid transit on that. I know there are cost overruns with the price of steel, the recession has caused revenues from RTD to go down, and the railroads are not being as cooperative as we once hoped. And they have a lot more things that make their costs more, so it's really a difficult situation. Let's try to keep RTDs honest on this, give us as much as they can. I put in a call this afternoon to Chairman Kemp. I wasn't able to get through to him. He's also our representative. He's term limited, so he won't be running for the RTD Board. It wouldn't be a bad idea to have somebody from Longmont run for the RTD Board for that seat, and it's not going to be me this time. Just know you have friends that are fighting, beating this drum, just like you are. And I'm trying to be realistic, I've been, as Councilmember Levinson has been, a party to the discussions that are going on at First in Name, which is where our termnis would be. Whatever we get, Longmont cannot be a stepchild in this procedure. It's got to be as important as all the other parts of the metro area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks for all you've done. Fred Gabriel?
Hi, I'm Fred Gabriel, 430 Sunset. I'm new at this. I'm here to talk about children. Ballpark, we're going to have eight hundred wells in this town and approximately eighteen hundred out in the county. They're building an oil field. My first point is, you can't raise children in an oil field. I have a compilation study from the pediatric environmental health specialty units on just one chemical, benzene. First study was done in Garfield County in our own state, 2005 to 2007. They found air benzene concentrations approached or exceeded health-based standard sites associated with all oil and gas drilling in their area. Benzene was everywhere. Comes up with the oil, it goes down with the fracking. I have three other doctor studies, talk about birth defects and what happens to children, but I'm going to defer on those specs right now. I just want to say that with regards to children, they absorb pound for pound more toxins than we do. Their systems are not fully developed, they also cannot get rid of those toxins. They are more susceptible than we are to what's going to happen. You cannot raise children in an oil field. Here's the deal, we live in an air inversion zone. You've all seen the brown cloud. We live in a bowl, and this bowl has a lid on it. This isn't the plains of Wyoming, Eastern Weld, or Texas. People get sick out there, what do you think's going to happen here? We're going to have toxic dust, I know it's out on the perimeter where our organic farms are, we're going to have toxic dust, we're going to have toxic fumes, and they're all going to be swirling around this inversion zone, landing in our yards, our gardens, our dog parks, and our farms. We're playing a very dangerous game here. People live in this area to be healthy. People start getting sick, children start getting sick, it's going to be all over Facebook and Twitter in a heartbeat. People start seeing wells going up across the street, they're going to get awful jumpy. They know their property values might drop, and they're going to worry about kids. They're maybe going to want to leave. Who's going to want to buy their house in the middle of an oil field? What if one business says, "I don't like it here anymore," and they leave? People are going to start to panic. I think the word is Exodus. Ladies and gentlemen, you might be presiding over a place that no one wants to come to and everyone wants to leave. Checkmate, we all lose. Because you can't raise children in an oil field. Could we all say that once together? You can't raise children in an oil field. Thank you, I'm done.
Please hold your applause.
Next, we have Don Colson, followed by Jane Ruth.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Councilman. Don Colson, 341 Grant Street. Busy night, so I'll try to wrap this up in under twenty minutes. I became acutely aware of the threat of our city posed by the fracking industry after viewing Fracking Hell, a video which showed what can happen to a small town or a city like Longmont when the fracking boys move in. I urge anyone hearing my voice to dial up YouTube, then Fracking Hell, for a real eye opener. As I see it, Council has but two things going for it in its negotiations with TOP and the COGCC. Time and a community at its back willing to stand some heat and search for a winning strategy. Things are happening at all levels of government. The feds are casting an eye at the turmoil visited upon rural communities by fracking operations. The state has several bills moving along to address similar issues, while counties are finally awakening to the threat at their doorsteps. The last thing Longmont should do is fold its cards before they're all dealt. Last weekend, we learned that Boulder County Commissioners were studying the issue of road and infrastructure damage from fracking operations and how these could be mitigated. Meanwhile, Douglas County Commissions recently approved a $170,000 study to examine the transportation impacts of fracking on county residents and infrastructure. All of these issues will impact their local communities, which would be ill-advised to act hastily in compromising with oil and gas interests. Longmont should be every bit as resolute and should demand an extension of the present moratorium for at least six months, and take threats of lawsuits for exactly what they are, threats. This community must be protected by its elected representatives. In return, they will receive widespread support now and in the future. Again, much is happening. Existing regulations may be here today and gone tomorrow, and only time will tell. I call on Council to stand tall and take the lead in aggressively defending this city and the quality of life we thus far enjoy. Whether or not six months will prove decisive is unknown, but there is little doubt that sixty days will do nothing but play into our opponent's hands. Do not allow that to occur. Give your citizens and yourselves the time to organize and the time to prove you are truly representatives of the community that elected you. Insist on a six-month extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no applause.
Shelley Basman, followed by Joe Bassman? Oh, excuse me, Jane Ruth is up first, then Shelley Basman. Jane Ruth?
Yes.
Yeah, and please hold your, or please don't pause after the speakers. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jane Ruth of 9132 Jotipa Drive. I am here tonight on behalf of Frederick Day of 2342 Billings Lane. He was unable to come tonight and asked me to read his statement. I want to urge the City Council to extend the moratorium by six months, this is in regards to fracking, so that more information can be gathered and more informed decisions made before the city oil and gas regulations are finalized. The need for this extension was, I believe, demonstrated during the meeting on February 21st, when the City Council made a decision to delete green fracking fluids from both the minimum and recommended requirements. This appeared to be a hasty decision based on very little information. Green fracking fluids showed up in the top three issues from the Joint Board's survey responses and also ranked high in the public's open house survey responses. Therefore, this should have been given greater consideration and research prior to making such an important decision. After the City Council meeting, I did a quick ten to fifteen-minute Google search on green fracking fluids. I have a list of some of the prominent links, those near the top of the Google results, which can be given to the Council for their consideration. Most prominent in the results was a report from the Associated Press of a keynote speech at a Colorado Oil and Gas Association conference held in Denver in August 2011. The speech was given by Halliburton CEO Dave Lissar, in which he touted their new green fracking fluid. He even demonstrated its green credentials by having an executive drink some of the fluid. According to the press article, this was apparently Halliburton's new Clean STEM product, which had been undergoing testing since the previous November. The links I have listed include Halliburton's site referencing Clean STEM, as well as links about other green fracking fluids and techniques. There is quite a bit of information currently available about such fluids and their state of development. This data should have been reviewed by the City Council prior to making a decision to delete the requirement for green fracking fluids. Furthermore, if sufficiently green fluids did not exist, they never would exist until someone defines a firm requirement for them. They would not be developed by the oil and gas industry without a clear incentive or requirement. To summarize, I urge the City Council to extend the moratorium for six months to provide time for further study and the gathering of more information before the oil and gas regulations are finalized.
Thank you. Three minutes.
Oh, three minutes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just give it to our clerk, and then you can begin speaking. Good evening, Councilwoman and Mayor Coombs. My name is Shelley Basman. I live at 3414 Lakeview Circle in Longmont. I've just almost completed what I consider to be a sacred responsibility. Last weekend and earlier today, Councilmembers Samori and Levinson received their parcels of letters, and now they've been delivered to all of you. These four hundred and fifty-eight non-duplicated letters were written to you by Longmont citizens during past sixty days. Like the letters from concerned citizens that you received in December, all are heartfelt. Each is deserving of your attention, and I dare say prayerful reflection. Because each citizen asks that the city fulfill the primary obligation of its Home Rule Charter to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Longmont. Joe and I first learned of the plans for oil and gas drilling and fracking on Longmont Parks and Open Space and right next to Three Combs in November, at meetings of the Environmental Affairs, the Parks and Open Space, and the Water Advisory Boards. Last November, Longmont's oil and gas regulations were over a decade old, predating the adoption of contemporary drilling and fracking, horizontal drilling and fracking, about which we all knew nothing. So we've come a long way. We now have a first draft of updated oil and gas regulations. It has some bold ideas and some creatively bold ideas. It does need, and it is getting, adjustments and fine tuning, and is being augmented by some parallel explorations and actions. When it becomes draft two, it will again need adequate time for vetting by citizens, boards, and commissions, with time to loop back to staff. It will also need some quiet time, some sleeping on it time, time for ripening, like a green tomato or fine wine. Since December of 2000, 2,000 Longmont citizens, did I hand that out by mistake? Two thousand Longmont citizens have given us their names, addresses, and emails, signing on and asking for the protection of our inalienable God, Creator-given rights to health, safety, and welfare from the known hazards of contemporary oil and gas mining. I was too. Among the hazards is visual, looking at the top of a tank, a production tank, and under infrared camera showing the benzene and heavy.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you. So these heavy hazardous industrial operations do not belong where citizens live, learn, work, play, exercise, recover, recreate, and pray. So for this protection, we ask Council tonight to extend the moratorium for six months. Thank you.
Joe Bassman, followed by Giselle.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Just prior to the meeting, there was a document distributed to you titled Longmont's Oil and Gas Regulations. I'd like to read to you the first paragraph of that document, and I'll be followed by a few other people who will also read some excerpts. Thank you very much. Longmont's Oil and Gas Regulations. The citizens of Longmont appreciate participating with the city government and staff to draft new oil and gas regulations. These new regulations for our city minimize the risks from oil and gas wells and the risk of litigation. We appreciate the time, effort, creativity, and cooperation that has been devoted to this project. The following regulations are appropriate, and we appreciate their inclusion in the current draft regulations. A, open pits and injection wells are prohibited. Thank you. B, oil and gas corporations must provide bonding and insurance for indemnity in the case of accidents. Thank you. C, fees will be assessed that appropriately mitigate the cost and expenses to our city infrastructure for accommodating the heavy industrial operations. Again, thank you. And finally, oil and gas wells are prohibited in residential zones. Many thanks.
Thank you. Joe, you forgot your address.
Oh, I couldn't do that. I'm at 3414 Lakeview Circle, where I own the surface rights. Thank you very much.
All right, go ahead. Giselle, could you pronounce your last name, please?
Yes, it's Giselle Coyaso, 3525 Lakeview Circle. The following additional requirements are reasonable and legally defensible, or they are worth defending, and we feel strongly that they should be explicitly added to the current draft. A, monitor air and water quality. B, specify a larger setback between buildings and a multi-well consolidated pad. The scientific basis behind the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission 350-foot rule is the risk of fire and explosion at a single wellhead. Consolidated pads have multiple wellheads and justify larger setbacks. C, require oil operators to provide proof of ownership of mineral rights. D, specifically designate within the regulations the following areas as outside activity areas. These are public use areas and open space. Oil wells are incompatible with the current established land use. Rough and Ready Park, Jim Hamm Nature Area, Union Reservoir, Sandstone Ranch, Quail Campus, the airport, Dickens Park, Rogers Grove Park, Golden Ponds, Blue Spies Park, Sunset Golf Course, Fox Hill Golf Course, Clark Centennial Park, Yoot Creek Golf Course, Mountain View Cemetery, Macintosh Lake, Twin Peaks Golf Course, Dog Park Number Two, and the Fairgrounds. Also, locations near Jim Hamm Nature Area, Affalter Park, Willow Farm Park, and Longmont Schools. Finally, E, require that when a residential zone property is changed to another zone, the prohibition against oil and gas wells for that property will remain in effect for at least five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Donalan, followed by Sherry Malloy.
Howdy, Steve Donalan, 2437 Terranian in Longmont. Mayor, City Council members, reasons to extend the moratorium for six months. Number one, the citizens of Longmont want an extension of the moratorium to October 12th, 2012. Number two, a moratorium of six months allows Longmont to collaborate with other local governments to create model oil and gas regulations appropriate for urban environments. This can become a coalition of local governments that minimizes and shares litigation risk. This can become a coalition of local governments that minimizes and shares litigation risk. Number three, a six-month moratorium minimizes the city's risk. There are significant risks involved with having oil and gas wells in the city. There is risk of litigation. The most proactive option and least risky option today is to extend the moratorium so that the overarching risk can be appropriately evaluated and balanced. Number four, a moratorium of six months benefits the citizens of Longmont. A moratorium to June benefits only oil and gas corporations. Number five, a six-month moratorium helps Longmont neighbors who live near a proposed consolidated well location and who want to move away before drilling commences. Number six, it allows the COGCC to add more inspectors to their staff. Currently, the COGCC has only 17 inspectors for the entire state of Colorado. Number seven, a six-month moratorium allows the new city manager to be involved in this process. Number eight, a six-month moratorium provides the city staff to continue with the COGCC setback stakeholder review that will extend over several months. A moratorium to 10/12/12 will prevent processing applications in June that might have to be grandfathered under more protective COGC regulations in the fall. A moratorium of six months allows for GOCC and COGA to educate the public as they wish to do.
Thank you, Steve. David, Sheri Malloy, followed by David Pelster.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of City Council. My name is Sheri Malloy. I live at 2113 Range Fleet Lane here in Longmont. A moratorium until 10/12/12 would allow City Council to do the following six action items. Number one, pass a resolution that the city's goal is to protect the nature, character, and livability of our community. Number two, pass an ordinance to establish a Longmont Oil and Gas Division. This would operate in conjunction with the Public Works and Natural Resource Department and the Economic Development Department. This division would be responsible for establishing a memorandum of understanding with COGCC for inspections and monitoring. It would allow, it would identify and ensure that abandoned wells are inspected on a yearly basis by the COGCC. It would identify abandoned pits within the city to ensure that there is no ground contamination. A moratorium until 10/12/12, this is number three, would establish a Longmont Oil and Gas Fund. Revenue from oil and gas could contribute to this fund. Number four, it would direct, it could direct the Oil and Gas Division to be proactive in reducing risks in urban areas. It can also sponsor COGCC rule change requests. Number five, pass an ordinance prohibiting Longmont from selling or leasing mineral rights or selling water for fracking. And number six, update the city's comp plan specifically, excuse me, update the city's comp plan to reflect the reality of oil and gas operations. Specifically, the comp plan update can, A) designate heavy industrial zones for oil and gas well operations, B) assess all municipally-owned property and determine the ownership of the mineral rights, and C) instruct staff that the ownership of mineral rights should be researched whenever property is considered for acquisition by the city. Tonight, we heard an excellent LPC presentation about Longmont owning our own power and highlighting some of the many benefits and creativity that happens when we have strong local control. We honor and thank our city leaders who sat in your seats 100 years ago for this. Please be bold and flex our local control muscle tonight. The good people of Longmont now and 100 years from now will honor and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. David Pelster, followed by James Kenworthy.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and fellow council members. My name is David Pelster. I live at 1574 Goshawk Drive. A moratorium until October 12, 2012 allows city staff and citizens adequate time to, one, for advisory boards and commission to review the draft regulations. Citizens are significant stakeholders in developing updated regulations, encourage public dialogue, education, and involvement, provide a loopback schedule so that citizen comments and suggestions may be incorporated into the draft. Number two, to vet the draft regulations before they are finalized. Number three, to analyze the risks to each and every Longmont neighborhood, find solutions that address our local issues. Four, to identify and resolve issues with existing oil wells at Union Reservoir, Quail Crossing, and especially Spring Valley. Five, for the memorandum of understanding process which takes time. Number six, to investigate how floodplain designations affect locations or wells might be located. For all of the above reasons, and for the thousands, thousands of Longmont residents who have signed up asking for protection from oil and gas wells in our lovely city, we ask our City Council this evening to extend the moratorium until October 12, 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, David. James Kenworthy, followed by Stephen Phoenix.
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. It should be obvious by now that drilling and fracking is a public health issue, and public health comes under the title of general welfare. So I'm going to read from a little document I brought with me. I hope you'll all pay attention because you all took an oath to uphold this document. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to our servant and to our posterity," that's us, "do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." That's in the preamble. Okay, let me see, where am I? Ah, Article One, Section Eight. "The Congress shall have a power to lay and collect taxes, duties, imposts, annexes to pay the debts, provide for the common defense, and general welfare of the United States." Semicolon, and it goes on. Oh, Amendment Nine. Amendment Nine, Rights Retained by the People. "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." Do we not have right to public health? I believe we do. If we don't, we're all in hot water. You all took an oath to uphold the Constitution. I took an oath to uphold the Constitution. It's been a while ago, but that oath does not have any ending point. So, you have the oath, I took the oath, a lot of people back here took the oath, and we intend to keep that promise. I was especially interested in the Longmont Power and Communications Presentation. Not much has changed in 100 years. Then, as now, state law hindered local control. If you were paying attention, state law had some kind of limitation on, is that a minute I have left or 30 seconds? Okay. State law, state law hindered local control. The citizens did the organizing to overcome that state law. It was a community effort. And here's a quote from that presentation. "The public decides how we do our business. They decide whether we are or are not doing a good job. I want to tell you, as long as the public believes that their rights are being violated, there is no such thing as a dead issue. This will come back and back and back."
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much. Stephen Phoenix, followed by Juline Baer.
Good evening, Council. Stephen Phoenix, 3545 Lakeview Circle. First, thank you all for your good spirit and dedication to service. Longmont has a historic tradition of building a strong, safe, and economically balanced community, because, without saying it, your efforts as policy shaping members will aspire to maintain these ideals. Now, you've been asked to represent your constituencies regarding gas and oil exploration, no doubt a matter much larger in importance than could be forecast just a few months ago. This may be the single most important issue you face as a public servant. Given the groundswell of community concern over this matter, it's easy to conclude that the issue presents a unique opportunity to dramatically impact the quality of life and viability of Longmont long term. It is our moment to decide what is in our collective best interest. At the heart of the matter are overt safety concerns for our citizenry and environment. There may be some contention over the magnitude of potential damages for fracking, but credible data suggests the dangers are very real and dramatic. State and industry regulations fall short, and the cost and burden of re-inhalating damages cannot be accurately predicted, nor can the liability be assuredly assigned. Less obvious is the infrastructure damage and devaluation of our housing market. With county bolder considering how to tackle the added pressure of heavy industrial traffic on their road systems, it seems appropriate to ensure the tax revenues are not overburdened from the exploitation of these private resources. Poor policy often leads to a constituency unwilling to support increased taxes for even the most needed of basic improvements. The quality of life benefits of solid, community-oriented development and services, clean, desirable neighborhoods and schools, and an inviting business climate are all threatened by fracking. How does Longmont benefit from this? What are our options? The Council's deliberation on this issue demonstrates a near total acquiescence to the foregone conclusion that fracking will be performed in Longmont. Our only measure of control is to draft regulations that provide some basic protections. Preemption, it would seem, is the trump in this debate. Rather than being concerned with resolving this most critical issue hastily by attempting to cordially comport the COGCC preemption or satisfying the desires of the oil corporations, the issue is ripe for a public referendum or a special ballot. Extend the moratorium and present this matter in public consideration. There are many examples of local authority being exercised successfully to shape zoning, mining, and public policy. Longmont should follow and help strengthen these precedents. Prevailing concerns of council focus around the possibility of litigation and the costs therein, pragmatically, it is impossible to take this argument seriously. The city's cost for regulatory enforcement, tax fair funding cleanup, road maintenance, increased cost for water, loss of property taxes, and increased healthcare costs are all evident. If fracking does find a home in Longmont, regulations should reflect these costs and insist on absolute accountability. Safety concerns should be mitigated beyond the point of uncertainty. Closed-loop systems should be a minimum. Scrubbers should be mandated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Juline Baer, followed by Virginia Black.
Good evening, Council. My name is Juline Baer. I live at 6217 Corinth Road west of Longmont. I shop in Longmont, and this is my hometown. It shocks me to contemplate what this beautiful town in a county world-renowned for its quality of life will look like in just a few years if we don't take a stand right now to protect it. Well rigs, gas tanks, stacks venting propane and methane, trucks carrying toxins down our streets. All the care the community and its leaders have taken to earn us, the ranking of the state's second safest city will be for naught if we don't take action. What action depends on how willing we are to stand up for our rights as citizens and property owners. I recognize that minerals are property, but consider this line of reasoning. If a homeowner decides to burn rubbish in her backyard and sets fire to a neighbor's house, that would be an invasion of the neighbor's property rights. For this reason, the city prohibits burning inside city limits. Following the same reasoning, fracking is prone to any number of harms to its neighbors, such as inadvertent spills and sometimes intentional dumping of toxic chemicals, the venting of gases that are harmful to human health, and the industrialization of residential neighborhoods. As a council, you would tell her not to burn her trash, and you can tell oil and gas that they cannot access their mineral interests from within city limits. That is no different from telling the homeowner not to burn trash. She might tell you that it prevents her from using her property in the way that she wants to or foresaw that she could, but you are still well within your jurisdiction. You have the property rights and human rights of others to consider. Any citizen, whether a schoolchild or a homeless man, has inalienable human rights, among which are certainly the right to clean air and water. It is my understanding that your first responsibility as elected leaders in a home-ruled county is to assure that citizens' rights are not violated. That is why I urge you to extend the current moratorium to six months. In that time, I also urge you to please seriously consider and adopt a community rights ordinance that places the health and welfare of citizens, i.e. real human beings, above the profit motives of any corporation. I realize that in doing this, you will run the risk of being sued, but I assure you that most people who live here will stand behind you and would encourage you to take that risk, especially when the only alternative is to see a toxic, dangerous industry invade their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Black, followed by Fred Kiefer.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. I'm Virginia Black. I live at 2609 El Hurst Circle. Very glad that the council voted to extend the moratorium on fracking for an additional 60 days, and I implore you to extend it further. In interest of transparency, in the fall, I revealed that I'm a scientist, that I retired from NYU School of Medicine in 2009 and moved to Longmont, and I really enjoy this community. When I spoke at that time, I mentioned that some of the chemicals that are used in fracking are ones that I was not allowed to throw down the sink or to evaporate into the air in a chemical hood in my laboratory because of the concerns of OSHA regarding safety and air and water quality. I also said at that time that I could not understand why the use of much larger amounts of these chemicals were not more tightly regulated. Therefore, I was initially heartened by the recommendations drafted for regulating this process in Longmont, particularly the requirement for the use of green chemicals. This requirement was rated among the top four in importance by the individuals attending the open house on February 6, and was subsequently rated among the top three in importance at the meeting of the joint boards which followed that open house. It was this choice, despite the fact that it was clear from the red, yellow, and green light analysis that had been done by city attorney Eugene Mai prior to that meeting, that there might be opposition at the state level. Given that spirit, I was very disheartened to learn that at the council meeting on February 21, this key requirement for use of green chemicals was renewed by an unanimous vote of the council. It was the only piece that was removed, if I understand correctly. I am very concerned that its removal followed a statement by one council member that she had been told by the Colorado Oil and Gas Association that a requirement for green drilling and hydraulic fracturing fluids would be difficult or impossible to meet because the technology wasn't there. And that's a quote from The Times called "The Halloween Day." As we have heard from a previous speaker, the COGA representative was minimally misinformed. A quick Google check reveals that green fracking, this is hard to say, that green fracking fluids are available, and that fracking without the use of toxic chemicals is done in several places currently. I would implore the council to do an independent, in-depth review on this topic, and I sincerely hope that as it moves forward in its analysis, it will reinstate this key regulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fred Kiefer, followed by Brad Churchill.
I'm Fred Kiefer. I'm at 813 Judson Street, and I think that most of the things that I wanted to say to council have been said better and with more detail than I have now, and so I won't take much of your time, but I do want to urge council to extend this moratorium another six months. I think it's obvious that it's what the citizens... I think it's obvious that it's what the citizens want, and it's also very necessary to ensure that we have a safe and sound community. And I would implore you to please not gamble with our health and safety of our unique community environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred. Brad Churchill, followed by Michael Belmont.
I'm Brad Churchill, 1260 Cumberland Drive, and I am the only person, I think, who is now a citizen of Longmont who does not want an extended moratorium. I've been looking into this after I was canvassed by Longmont Roor, and I've relied for what I'm going to say on what I think are relatively objective sources: the University of Texas at Austin Energy Institute, the Geological Society of London, and the COGCC. I think there are three concerns that I think I've heard, and a lot more than I can deal with in three minutes, but there are concerns about water quality, and the real concerns and obviously management and regulation and monitoring of practices are critical. However, it is true that the COGCC has been monitoring 1,500 wells in the San Juan Basin, where there's a lot of fracking going on for years, and they have found no contamination of those wells. So I think, and for that and many other reasons that I could go in with more time, I think that the risk to water supplies is manageable. They also are worried about the use of water, which is, again, a concern. And I've heard expressed that, you know, it's the same amount of water that many millions of people use. I looked into 2005 in Colorado. The amount of water that was used for all mining purposes was 0.16% of the total water consumed in Colorado that year. That equates to about 1.2 teaspoons out of every gallon. So, most of the water obviously went for irrigation. So I don't think that the amount that's going to be used for fracking is actually going to be a huge impact to our water supplies. And there is concern about emissions from gas wells. I've heard concern about methane and propane, but those are non-toxic gases. They're as safe as nitrogen in open air. The volatile organic compounds like benzene and others obviously are dangerous, but I think we need to bear in mind that, as far as risks go, we are already exposed in our daily lives to those chemicals. When we drive, when we paint, when we clean, when we live with smokers, when we pump our gas. I would think that living near a well on its worst day is similar to living near a heavy street with a lot of traffic on it. So again, since we accept those risks in our everyday lives, I'm not sure there's reason to say no to wells, and I don't think 800 wells is the number that we're probably going to be dealing with. So, I've looked into this some, and I'm going to continue to look, and I've heard some other allegations tonight that I'll be investigating myself, but based on everything that I've read, I think that it can be done safely, and I support reasonable regulation.
Thank you. Fred. Michael Belmont, followed by Steve Rourke.
Mayor Coombs, City Council. I'm Michael Belmont. I live at 841 Tenacity Drive here in Longmont. Please allow me to read a quote from the distinguished professor of physiology, Pierre Pachet, at the very prestigious University of Toulouse in 1872. I quote, "Louis Pasteur's theory of germs is ridiculous fiction." I share this because it illustrates that even the well-intentioned and highly intelligent can have a perception or a position that later proves uninformed and incorrect on critical matters. Perhaps the current issues surrounding fracking within our community are of greater import than we can now know at this moment. Because the positions you adopt and the actions that you take on this issue will remain with us for decades to come, does it not make good sense to err on the side of caution by taking as much time as precedent would allow in order to responsibly form our opinions? You here hold within your power to affect more than 86,000 citizens of Longmont, for good or ill, by fracking procedures. I wish to here join my voice with the many requests to extend the moratorium on fracking within Longmont city limits to a total of 10 months to October 12th of this year. What harm could that possibly do? In the worst-case scenario, we will all learn more about a procedure that will certainly affect this city and most, if not all, of its citizens for many, many decades. Knowing that such a moratorium has precedence in other communities, if you are not willing to extend it accordingly, that would clearly say to me that you have already made up your mind and are not the least bit open to learning more. And by more, that could very possibly contain information that will directly affect the health and well-being of we Longmont citizens. Yes, the very citizens that you vowed to serve by taking the oath of your office. Once, a well-intentioned, highly-educated individual publicly stated, "Louis Pasteur's theory of germs is ridiculous fiction." I wonder if the author, Mr. Pachet, later wished he had waited 10 months to learn more about germ theory before releasing his statement. Instead, this intelligent man that no doubt contributed many good things to society later had to bear the knowledge that he would likely be remembered in history, not for his many good contributions, but for his one uninformed vote against significant medical progress. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Michael. Steve Rourke, followed by Catherine Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I also want to very emphatically urge you to extend the moratorium another six months. I'm speaking as someone who has, with a PhD in chemistry and 25 years' experience as an analytical chemist, and I urge you to support the last gentleman's statement. What possible harm could be done by waiting and learning a little bit more? Gas industry people will tell you that there's been no definitive link. They've been saying for years there's no definitive link between fracking and groundwater contamination. The EPA has recently come out of a report that in Pavilion, Wyoming, there is now a definitive link. So that is not correct. And to the gentleman who came out in favor who said these risks are manageable, well, if the groundwater's contaminated, what are you going to say then? Oops? As Rick Perry said. I don't think so. Few things that I think need to go into the regulations. Again, speaking as an analytical chemist, another thing the industry will say is if they find contaminants, they'll say, "Well, there's no way to prove that they weren't there already." So there has to be testing prior to any activity, so you establish that baseline. And then that way, if there's a change, they cannot make that claim, which I assure you they will attempt to make. I think there needs to be full disclosure of the chemicals used. I've read that the new regulations allow them exemptions for proprietary formulations. I think that's a lame excuse and should not be allowed. There has to be, if there is going to be a fracking, I totally support the green chemicals. And there needs to be full disclosure of all chemicals used. That needs to be in the regulations. There's also evidence to suggest that surface spills contribute to groundwater contamination as much as the fracking itself. So there needs to be control of that, and there needs to be blowout detectors used in all manufacturing. Wastewater disposable has to be properly addressed. The open pits, I think that's already been addressed adequately, but what are you going to do with the wastewater? Who has to pay for that? I work in the pharmaceutical industry. We pay a lot of money to properly dispose of the chemicals that we have to use as part of our processes. I think the oil industry ought to be demanded to do the same, pay those costs. It's the price of doing business. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, Catherine Moore, followed by Joan Peck.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the council. My name is Catherine Moore. I too live at 2321 Water Song Circle. I leave the science up to my husband, who just spoke. I'd simply like to say that I moved here five years ago from a small town in North Haven, Connecticut, and that town was, when I grew up, pristine, beautiful farming community, which slowly became anything but, and the reason being that our local council did not look to the future, and we were not protected in terms of our water. And I watched the beautiful river behind my house that was once crystal clear turn green and then brown and then die. I watched many things happen in Connecticut that was awful, and simply because people did not wait. They did not wait to make decisions. They did not postpone. They did not look to the future. And I'm asking you, please, to save this beautiful town, to do what you've been asked to do, to protect the people, to protect the environment, and to please, 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 extend. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Joan Peck, followed by Danielle Wingold.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. I have two issues I would like to talk about. The first one is fast tracks. I totally concur with Mary Blue that we need to aggressively try to get fast tracks into Longmont. We voted that tax in 2004 and have been paying for the train for six years, six or seven years. So I would like you to agree to get fast tracks and not the bus. The second issue is, of course, the gas and oil drilling. After the testimony and vote on Senate Bill 12088 two weeks ago, the chair of the committee leaned forward to address us. With a bit of passion, we were told to watch our local council members, listen to what they say and how they act. There's no reason not to extend the moratorium for six months. So what is holding you back? The last two council elections were funded in part by ATP and WTP, the American Traditional Partnership, and the Western Traditional Partnership. These PACs were directly linked to funding by the gas and oil industry. If you're a council member and you accepted these funds to get elected on council, I would like you to ask yourself, whom are you serving? The residents or people of Longmont that you took the oath to serve? Those are the real people or the virtual people voted in by the Supreme Court, which includes the gas and oil industry? Your vote will let me know where you stand. Thank you.
Danielle, no clapping, please. Excuse me, John, you need to come back here and get your, you didn't give us your address.
Joan Peck, 1935 Spruce Avenue.
Thank you. Danielle Wingold.
Hi, I'm Danielle Wingold. I live at 627 Glen Arbor Circle. I was here last week. I just recently became aware of the fracking issue. First, someone came door-to-door to my house and explained some of it, and then I started seeing a new fracking site going up on County Road 1 I drive by every day on my way to work. So I started looking into it more. I came to last week's session, and I listened to the comments from the gas and oil industry. Specifically, they talked about the fact that regulations are already in place, and so I decided I should review them and see what I thought. And it looks on the surface like they are very comprehensive, and they indicate that if you drill down, you should probably be able to find more details on how things should be regulated, but that's actually not the case. For example, Rule Number 907 says that operators are encouraged to reduce the quantity and toxicity of their waste. Encouraged, that's kind of a recommendation. That doesn't sound like a regulation to me. And I think of the site that I drive past every day on my way to work. We had really high winds last week, Wednesday. You know those big semi-truck-looking boxes that are stacked too high around a frac site? A whole section of them were knocked over today, a week later. They're still all knocked over. Doesn't look like the recommendations are really encouraging good practices, right? I don't know what they're supposed to be doing, but I know they're not supposed to be knocked over into the site around those big tanks. So it seems pretty clear that current regulations are really weak, and they're not enforced, right? We know there's 17 inspectors for the state of Colorado, over 100,000 wells. It seems like local regulations have to be enacted to correct the deficiency and enforce some kind of oversight. I'm asking you to do that and extend the moratorium so that we have time to really understand what the regulation should be. I went fishing for, maybe looking for, how well the county benefited from fracking, since they have almost 18,000 wells now. I didn't come up with anything. So I don't know what the advantages are. Maybe you have some idea if maybe it's going to benefit Longmont? I don't see it, but it seems to me that if there's a whole bunch of risks and no real advantage, that it seems like a kind of clear-cut case to extend the moratorium as long as we can and hopefully prevent it from coming into our city. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Danielle. Ben Cowan, followed by John Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ben Cowan. I live at 1340 South Francis Street. I'm urging you to support an extension of the moratorium on fracking a full six months in order to develop sensible and effective regulations. You've already heard tonight about many possible regulations. I'd like to offer one more. It's very simple, and it would cost next to nothing to implement, and that would be to require fracking operators and executives of all their companies to sign up a legally binding pledge to drink two cups of Longmont tap water each and every day, starting the day that fracking operations begin, until 10 years after they cease. They can drink it however they want. They can drink it at room temperature, drink it over ice, make Kool-Aid out of it. We couldn't let them boil it for tea, though, since that might evaporate some dangerous hydrocarbons. They could add their own hydrocarbons by having it with a shot of whiskey. They can drink it on a chair, they can drink it on a plane. The point is, they should agree not just to put their money where their mouth is in terms of getting requisite insurance and bonding, but they should actually have to put their mouths where their mouth is. And if they don't, it's a big red flag that maybe what they're saying, the claims that they're making about the safety of fracking, they don't actually believe themselves. I would also like to invite members of council to take this pledge. If you are convinced that the regulations that are in place by the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission are sufficient, if you think that there's been enough time to consider everything, so you oppose extending the moratorium until October, if you think that the regulations are strong enough, then go ahead and take the pledge, commit to drink the water yourself, to provide it to your families. I'd also like to extend that invitation to any members of the audience who might be in favor of fracking and oppose extending the moratorium. If there are any hands? Well, we've got one over there. But this pledge, the idea here is just at least require honesty on everyone's part, and extending the moratorium would allow everyone to move forward honestly and consider this issue. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Ben. John Martin, followed by Edwina Salazar.
Mayor, council members, I'm John Martin, 1671 Radcliffe Place. I was filing our sales tax reports for the business I run this month, and I noticed that the sales tax for the city is 3.275. The sales tax for RTD is 1%. That means for every dollar that we contribute for sales taxes for this well-run city, we're contributing 30 cents to RTD. The services I get from the city, and the services everyone here gets from the city, I think are phenomenal for that 3.275%. When I look at the 30%, whatever that number is that RTD's taking out of Longmont, it just blows me away. When I look at the bus service that we have and this dream of a train coming to Longmont, I absolutely think that's ridiculous. Mary was right. She's not going to live to see it. I'm not going to live to see it, and thank goodness the Boy Scouts are gone, because I'd hate to break their hearts, because they're not going to see it. If you believe the train's coming to Longmont, you're drinking their Kool-Aid, and that Kool-Aid's been laced with something from a dispensary out of Boulder. We've got to stand up to RTD. I think it's absolutely crazy that we're paying 1% RTD. My blood boils every time I drive down I-25 and I see these little trains buzzing down and serving the Southwest Corridor or downtown in Lodeau. We are paying for that train, and we have been for eight years, and they're asking us to pay more. I think, I came in here with one suggestion, but I got two now, because Gordon Pedro here is retiring soon, and he's done a phenomenal job running this city. city. Gordon, you're going to get real bored in retirement, because there's only so much golfing you can do. Mary Blue is looking for someone to fill that RTD slot. And I would be honored to have you on that board, because you are, you have common sense. And I would love to have a voice from Longmont like yours on that board. My second suggestion, and this is the one I came in with, and this is going to take some time on your part. Don't shake your head. You haven't heard me yet. I seriously think Longmont should look at dropping out RTD. As good as we are at running Longmont Power and as good as we are at running this city, I guarantee you, the people of Longmont could run a municipal bus service better than RTD. And, you know, this train stuff, it's a dream, guys and ladies and people. I really think we need to hold RTD, you know, hold their feet to the fire, because they're telling us what we want to hear. And it ain't, we ain't going to see a train here. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you, John. Edwina Salazar, followed by Doug Ward.
Good evening, Members of City Council, Mayor Coombs. I'm Edwina Salazar. I'm the Executive Director of the R Center at 303 Atwood. And this is Doug Ward, and he's with the Longmont Symphony. When was the last time you heard about one nonprofit raising funds for another nonprofit? Well, it's happened. Not long ago, we at the R Center received an unexpected message from another nonprofit in our community, the Longmont Symphony Orchestra. The symphony's leadership saw the February 12 Times Call article titled "Longmont's R Center Pantry Sees Drop in Donations." And they said they just had to do something. So the symphony, a donor-supported organization itself, decided to donate $5 from every ticket sold from its March 3 performance to help the R Center continue to meet the rapidly increasing demand for food we are seeing from families and individuals in our community. And we, of course, are humbled and honored by such a gesture. Having one organization step up to help another in its time of need is just further proof that Longmont is a truly amazing, caring community. Historically, larger-than-average food donations in November and December served to carry the R Center through the early part of the new year. This year, that is just not the case. And of late January, our pantry shelves were already running particularly low, and unfortunately, they continue to do so. We are seeing an extraordinary number of middle-class folks who are still unemployed in this economy. And that, by and large, is our increase in demand for food. For this special event, the symphony is presenting Lindy Deutsch, who has been called one of the most interesting, imaginative, and downright thrilling young violinists in America today. Ms. Deutsch will be performing Gershwin's Rhapsody in Blue for violin and tango variations by Solis, among other musical selections. You all are invited, the public as well, the council, to the concert Saturday, March 3, at 7:30 p.m. at Vance Brand Civic Auditorium. And this is open to all ages. The tickets are 16 for adults, 12 for children under 18, and 14 for seniors over 60, and can be purchased in advance at the symphony office or in the box office that evening. So whether folks are symphony lovers or have never been, it is our hope that the Longmont community will pack the house this Saturday, not only to help the R Center, but also to experience the true gem that we have right here in our own backyard, the Longmont Symphony Orchestra. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwina.
Mayor Coombs, council members, Doug Ward, 2337 Brende Court. On behalf of the Board of the Longmont Symphony, we just feel that a great opportunity to be able to cooperate with the R Center. I think, as Gordon pointed out at the start of this meeting this evening, demonstrates again where organizations, even organizations with varying missions, can cooperate together for mutual benefit. And it's just a pleasure to be able to do this and a pleasure to be able to work with Edwina. So thank you, and we hope you all join us for the symphony concert on Saturday evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Nice try. Judith Blackburn, followed by Mark Weir.
Judith Blackburn, 3724 Oakwood Drive. Fracking again. There are certain things that we all agree on about this topic. Everyone with eyes to see will agree that oil and gas wells and their ancillaries do not improve the beauty of our landscape. Everyone who researches it agrees that they are potentially dangerous, or at a minimum, we don't know the long-range health effects. Common sense tells us fracking uses too much water, which we cannot do without and still live. And homeowners in the vicinity of potential wells, which includes many of us here, are worried about property values. Those things I think we can agree on. What we don't seem to agree on is whether this method of providing jobs and revenue is the best road forward economically, or whether we should or could leap forward to green energy without this intermediate step to prolong dependence on fossil fuel. We may also disagree on the industry's potential to monitor itself or even to speak honestly about its shortfalls in doing so. And we certainly disagree as to what our options are in slowing fracking down or stopping it entirely. We've been told that we do not have any power or authority to do this. I'm here to suggest that there are options we haven't even considered yet as we focused on tweaking mandated state regulations. At last Sunday's event at Trail Ridge Middle School, I was asked over and over again by city residents why the city can't just ban fracking within its city limits. We are, after all, guaranteed certain inalienable rights as citizens in both the U.S. and the Colorado Constitution, which Jim Kenworthy mentioned earlier. We are a home-rule city. In the coming months, you will be hearing more about what those rights are, both the explicit ones and the implicit ones. You, as our representatives, have an obligation to consider a community rights ordinance that reinforces our home-rule status. And there are other options that have not been thoroughly investigated so far. So I, too, support extending our moratorium for another six months, and I want to guarantee that that will be legal and risk-free. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Mark Weir, followed by Marissa Dirks.
Mark Weir, 310 Crest Ridge Lane, Longmont. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would just want to add my voice to the many others that you've already heard and have spoke more eloquently than I can in favor of extending the moratorium. I think that the implications of this activity, which could potentially, as other people have said, turn our beautiful city into an industrial site in which no one particularly wants to live, are too far-reaching to make a hasty judgment and to pass on any opportunity to investigate every possibility of regulating fracking where as much as possible. And I don't think that we should take at face value the statements of the oil and gas industry as to what their safety record is, nor what their belief in what the regulations say. I think we should investigate as far as possible, whatever we can do. I think it's incumbent on everyone's responsibility for making Longmont as good a place to live as we can possibly make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Marissa Dirks, followed by Elizabeth Olsen.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, Council. I'm Marissa Dirks. I live at 12874 North 95th Street. I'm here to offer up a bit more data in support of extending the moratorium on fracking until October. Just last week, a report was released, the findings of which are to be published in the Journal of Geophysical Research in March, just in a few days. Scientists at NOAA's Earth System Research Laboratory in Boulder, Colorado, were able to attribute high levels of pollutants to oil and gas operations in the Denver Basin. Their analysis also suggests that emissions of methane, the second-most critical anthropogenic greenhouse gas and other volatile organic compounds, VOCs, including benzene, a regulated carcinogenic gas, are most likely underestimated in current inventories. Air samples collected since 2007 in Erie, Colorado, have shown an unexpectedly strong signature of alkanes and benzene coming from northeastern Colorado. To fully identify the sources of these hydrocarbons, NOAA scientists carried out a pilot study in Weld County, home to over 20,000 gas wells. The study concluded that oil and gas operations in the region are responsible for the enhanced methane and higher alkane levels observed at the Boulder Atmospheric Observatory. It's a mouthful. In 2007, the Denver and Colorado Front Range Region was officially designated as a federal non-attainment area for repeated violations of the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for ozone. This is significant, because scientists have identified inconsistencies between their results and state and national regulatory emissions inventories for methane and VOCs. Such research is vital in supporting NOAA's mission to advance the study of air quality and greenhouse gases emissions. We need more time. If this comprehensive study took scientists five years to conduct and a report on that study comes out in March, we owe it to our citizens to take the time necessary to obtain and digest such a study conducted in our backyard as to possible impacts on Longmont residents. And again, per this article, quote, "Scientists have identified inconsistencies between their results and state and national regulatory emissions inventories for methane and VOCs." Shouldn't we learn more about these inconsistencies before making critical decisions that will affect Longmont for generations to come and irreversibly impact our environment? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marissa. Elizabeth Olsen, followed by Strider Binstone.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Olsen, and I live at 1201 South Kimbark Street. And I have to warn you guys that this speech was prepared this evening with my five-year-old on my lap in a very grouchy mood, competing for my attention here. So I'm going to do the best I can with this. So I wanted to begin by thanking all of you for taking the time to listen to our request slash demands that you extend this moratorium for six months. I was really surprised when I woke up the next morning. I didn't get to stay for the end of the council meeting. And I was also disturbed to hear that you guys only chose to extend the moratorium for 60 days, especially when I sat here last week and saw only one person get up and speak in opposition to the extension of the moratorium. And he was a representative of the COGCC, no less. So that was really concerning to me and alarming. And I honestly don't really understand what the motives are and why there's not just a simple, you've got a huge group of people coming in, the vast majority are requesting that this gets extended, and it's not happening. So I think that what we're asking, what your constituents are asking, is that you not act impulsively and that, as lawmakers, you act judiciously and prudently. And what this means to me is that you give the citizens of Longmont the time to become better educated on this matter and that you protect the children and the families of Longmont that you all have agreed to do in your positions. How can you, in good conscience, go against your stated values to protect children and family by allowing and condoning the use of hazardous chemicals that may enter the water supply and we know will pollute and toxify our air? There are many unknown risks associated with fracking, and yet there are also many known risks. We know that these toxic chemicals can be damaging to our air quality. Take a look at Erie, our neighbors. Last week, when I woke up on Wednesday, there was also an article in The Times saying that the air quality there is equivalent to several of the cities in this country, that it's actually worse than some of them, and that it's directly linked to the oil and gas drilling. And I fear that we're heading in that direction if we move forward with the fracking. I think our health and our water also are in danger. One of the things that concerns me so much about the water is not just the contamination, but that 5 million gallons of water are used per fracking. It's my understanding that we have over 100,000 wells. So that is, to me, an enormous amount of water. And the other problem with that water is that it's wasted. It's done. We're diminishing, I see Councilmember Witt that you're shaking your head no, and I'm not sure what that is, but I find that a little offensive.
Your three minutes are up, Doug.
Oh, okay. Well, I wanted to just finish by saying that I hope you guys will take this seriously and that the following, just following and extending with the moratorium.
Thank you.
So, sorry.
Strider Binstone, followed by Teresa Foster.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, City Council. I'm Strider Binstone, 951 17th Avenue. I'd like to commend the LPC for 100 years of good-quality public service. And as the director said, the handcuffs are off on fiber optics. Let's get those fiber optics. We desperately need them. We are being robbed. RTD, we voted for that quite a number of years ago. Mary Blue was absolutely right. We want the rail. We want the fast tracks. Maybe it's more expensive, but it's our right. China is building 12,000 miles of really fast tracks. Can't we do 40 miles in this country? I'm serious. Public services utilities should be comprehensive, fair, inclusive, relevant, and inexpensive. We've shown how that can work for 100 years with LPC. Shouldn't it also include public health and our water supply? A home-rule city, if we cannot protect public health and water purity, what possibly could home rule mean? In fact, what might democracy mean if our basic rights and our basic public health are preempted by a state agency, the COGCC, whose mandate, legal mandate, is to promote the oil and gas industry, financed through buying public officials by the Western Tradition Partnership, which is now being sued in the United States Supreme Court by the Montana Supreme Court? The problem is corporate impunity. 150 years ago, they dug gold mines out here. My father used to work in the gold mines. What did they use? Cyanide. What's left over? It's called tailings. A lot of those tailings are still poisoning the water supply. 50 years ago, there was a conspiracy to take over this country. It's called neoliberal economics, to corrupt and then take over the public interest and our government, which is our steward over these commons. And to quote one of the leaders of that mandate, is to drown it in the bathtub. It is precisely what that means, to prevent the public from being able to protect the public interest, so those who profit off of our economy, which we built up publicly, that they can take it and own it themselves and then mandate that we do anything and everything they choose. 110 years ago, Heinrich Ebson wrote up an incredible play called "An Enemy of the People." The very same thing was happening then. Read your history. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Teresa Foster, followed by Elise Jones.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Coombs. I'm Teresa Foster, 712 Thornwood Way. Okay, I'd like to comment on the second paragraph agenda item, number 4A. It's right here. It's beneath background and issue analysis.
It's beneath background and issue analysis, and I'm going to read it. "Since October 2011, the conversation regarding oil and gas operations in and around the city has turned more towards a land use and regulatory evaluation to assure that the oil and gas activities can be conducted in a manner that is safe, utilizes best management practices, and preserves the natural environment." Am I hearing that City Council will assure us that oil and gas activities can be conducted in a manner that is safe? The qualifying word here is assure. If assure means to tell someone, excuse me, quote, "to tell someone something positively or confidently to dispel any doubts that they may have," then indeed, it sure sounds like the City Council will protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. However, the problem is, how can anyone assure us that this industry won't harm us? There is continuing and growing evidence of leaks, spills, and air pollution that are affecting people's health, their safety, and well-being. And just last week, as somebody else mentioned, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration reported that Erie, Colorado, population 18,000, has more propane in their air than Houston or Pasadena, California, my hometown, excuse me, Los Angeles, as a result of drilling for natural gas in and around their city. That's pretty serious. As public servants for the people in the city of Longmont, you took an oath when you were elected to protect your constituents. If you can't assure us that we will be safe, then I respectfully request that you push the envelope beyond a two-month moratorium extension to a full six-month extension. And then we need to do our homework to assert our home rule status and ban fracking. This is the only way that we will be protected from industry's harm. The situation at hand is that agreement has already been drawn up some time ago between the state of Colorado and the oil and gas industry corporations. They've made up the rules that we, as a municipality, are mandated to follow. However, this also means that these corporations have taken control over our legislature to make laws that are amenable to the oil and gas industry. The reality is, we are being funneled down a regulatory cattle chute where the state tells us how high to jump and focuses on meager setbacks, but ignores things like air quality and water destruction. Things are only less bad, but we still get harmed.
Thank you, Teresa.
Is that three minutes?
That's three minutes.
Are you kidding? The bottom line is, this isn't a fracking problem, it is a democracy problem.
Thank you. Elise Jones, followed by Rebecca Meyer.
Mayor Coombs, council members. My name is Elise Jones, and I live at 716 Marine Street, just down the road apiece in Boulder. I assure you, I haven't had any of that wacky Kool-Aid that was discussed earlier, not to worry. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your attention to this really important issue. In my day job, I'm the executive director of Colorado Environmental Coalition, statewide conservation group, where I've spent the last decade working on oil and gas issues, pushing to keep drilling away from homes, from rivers and streams, from wildlife habitat, and working to strengthen protections for air and water. But I'm actually here tonight in my capacity as a local citizen and a candidate for Boulder County Commission. I would like to stand in solidarity with the citizens of Longmont, who are clearly concerned, and rightfully so, about the environmental risks and public health concerns associated with oil and gas development. And I specifically want to express my support, along with what many others have said, for a six-month extension on your moratorium. Yes, we have made progress in updating our state oil and gas rules. Things are much better, believe it or not, than they used to be, but they're still not good enough, and there's a lot more work to be done. Oil and gas is an, development is an industrial process, there are impacts, and even with good intentions, there are accidents. And we saw this last week in Longmont, where the grater hit the wellhead, and we had an oil and gas leak right there. You might have seen my quote in the front page of the Denver and West section of Denver, the Denver Post today, calling on the governor to take back his erroneous claim that there had been no incidents of contamination since 2008, groundwater contamination from drilling and fracking, because that's just not the case. And indeed, a Denver Post analysis has found 58 different instances of groundwater contamination in last year, and the COGCC has also reported numerous instances of contamination. Oil and gas development has impacts, and those are only intensified in an urban setting like Longmont. It's right for communities to be able to have the power to protect their citizens and to safeguard their air and water quality, but this is a complex issue, and it takes time to get those protections right. And I encourage you to take the time to get it right for Longmont and for the rest of Boulder County. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Rebecca Mar.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. My name is Rebecca Meyer, and I live at 805 Summerhawk Drive, very close to the Union Reservoir. My big concern is for the air quality and water quality that appears to be at risk with fracking. And I align myself with the many people who've requested that you create an, push for the extension or mandate an extension of six months to study this issue and to protect the citizens and myself and my children, too. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends public invited to be heard. Can we take a 10-minute break?[1004.48]
Not the Republican in order.
Okay, are there any questions from council members before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Is there any other additional discussion? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, I move ordinance 2012-09.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Mayor 8B is ordinance 2012-10. Public hearing and second reading of bill for an ordinance amending the 2012-2016 capital improvement program. And Mayor, it's that companion piece. And just make sure the CIP is in place so that we can actually do that work. So we had no additional information unless you have questions. Okay, are there any questions from council members before I open for a public hearing? Seeing none, I will open this item for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Is there any other discussions at this time? Councilmember Levinson.
Mayor, I'd like to move for adoption, ordinance 2012-10.
All right, it's been first and second. Let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Next item is 8C, ordinance 2012-11. Public hearing and second reading of the bill for an ordinance approving the rebate of development-related fees with GE Energy Control Solutions Incorporated. And Brad has a short presentation.
Thank you, Gordon, good evening. Mayor Coombs, members of council, Brad Power, Director of the Department of Economic Development. I'm going to be addressing on the next two items, which are both applications for development-related fees. Fee rebates associated with a couple of companies that are undertaking expansions in our community. The first is for GE Energy Control Solutions, which has been located in Longmont since 2009. They're at 1800 Nelson Road. When they originally located in Longmont, a few years ago, they were slated to employ approximately 180 people. Their employee count at this point is up to about 200 people. And in 2009, the city provided an initial round of development fee rebates associated with their construction projects at that building. And that amounted to approximately $69,000 at the time in terms of that first rebate. They have applied for a second round. They're expanding their location where they are now by approximately 26,000 square feet. And they're adding an additional 20 employees. The development costs of that site, or that expansion, will be approximately $565,000. And so the development fee rebate amount would amount to about $13,000. Several locations in the GE corporate area have been under consideration for this expansion around the country. And they've indicated to us that if this new round of fee rebates for this second construction project is granted here in Longmont, that the project will in fact go forward in Longmont. I would note that all of the criteria associated with our primary job, our primary employer fee rebate program have been met and achieved. And you can refer to the information in your packet relative to the background information and the actual application process that they went through. If granted, the fee rebates would be provided to GE Energy following the completion of the construction period of the project and after a certificate of occupancy has been issued for the building. Similar to other projects that we've done in the past, if GE fails to provide the employment levels, which again is 20 employees over the course of the next two years, if that does not come to fruition, our agreement has in place a stipulation that they would essentially refund to us the proportionate share of the fee rebates that they would owe to the city if they fail to employ those 20 people by the two-year period. Due to the fact that this is a request for 100% of the eligible fees that are in our rebate program, if you choose to go forward with this, it requires a two-thirds affirmative vote from the city council. Our recommendation for you is to approve this request from GE Energy based on the fact that the retention of established and growing businesses in the community has really shifted in the downturn of the economy to one of the larger economic development tools that we're trying to do is retain our healthy businesses that are in town and want to grow and want to prosper in the future. And that's certainly their plan under this new expansion. I would say that there are two representatives from GE Energy here who would be available to answer any questions you may have. Mark Thomas is the plant manager from here in Longmont. And he has also been joined by Jonathan Malatzis, who is a manufacturing and process engineer. He was actually marshaling through the new project on behalf of that company. So I would be able to answer any questions and those two gentlemen would also be able to answer any questions you may have about their future endeavors here in Longmont.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions from council members? I guess seeing no questions, Councilmember Bagley.
I think primary jobs are a great thing to bring to Longmont. Where are the GE executives? Thanks for what you do. Don't have any questions. I think it's a cheap price to pay, especially if they're guaranteeing job growth. I'd move that we pass. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mayor, I'm just anxious. Get us jobs, I'm anxious.
I will open this item for public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion at this time? Councilmember Bagley.
Anybody mind if I make a motion? I move that we pass ordinance 2012-11 as written.
It's been moved in second, let's vote. It passes seven to zero. Mayor 8B is ordinance 2012-12. Public hearing and second reading of a bill for an ordinance approving the rebate of development-related fees with Micron Technology Incorporated. And Brad has a few remarks on this one.
Mayor Coombs, thanks again, and members of council. A lot of my comments regarding the second application are mirroring the first in terms of some of the process that we've gone through. This one would be for Micron Technology Corporation, which is based in Boise, Idaho. They too opened a Longmont facility in 2009 at 2602 Clover Basin Drive. And that facility currently employs 137 people. Micron has indicated to us that the Longmont location has proved so successful to them that they are actually going to build a second facility in the community at 1900 Pike, which would be about 44,000 square feet. It would represent a capital investment on their part of about $5.5 million. Based on that investment, they've also asked for a fee rebate of certain development-related and city sales tax fees. And they've also requested that 100% fee eligibility consideration by you. Based on their investment, we're estimating that the current estimated amount of the fee rebates would total approximately $86,000. In exchange for that, they are indicating that this facility at the maximum capacity will employ approximately 100 people. They've also stipulated in our draft agreement with them that they would employ a minimum of 70 people over the course of the next two years. They've indicated that most of those positions will be engineers at the facility and that their annual average salary will exceed $100,000 per year. Again, if granted, the fee rebate would be provided to Micron following the completion of construction and a certificate of occupancy. And the same stipulations would apply in terms of if they do not meet the threshold of employing those 70 people within two years, we would exercise the stipulation in our agreement with them to try to recover the proportionate amount that they would owe us if they do not meet that 70-employee threshold. Again, this would require a two-thirds vote, affirmative vote from you to approve this one. And I think our reasoning for providing this type of investment in the long-term development of a healthy job base in our community is the same as what I outlined for GE Energy. Mr. Jay Hyder is here from Boise. And he's the Corporate Site Service Manager for Micron Incorporated. And he would also be available to answer any questions you may have regarding this application, as would I.
Just one quick question. When you say we can claw back, somebody sees if they don't employ 70, is it a linear relationship? If they only employ 35, then do we get half the fees back? Is that how it's written?
Well, it's proportionate. So what I said in the council communications, I said if there's, you know, if they don't, for instance, if there's 50 positions, then they'd be at 71% attainment level. So we'd be entitled to 29% rebate or refund of the amount that we would be rebating. So we do that kind of proportion analysis.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open this up to public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Is there any other additional discussions at this time? Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2012-12.
Second.
Let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Mayor 8D also has to do with a positive business development on your agenda tonight. Ordinance 2012-13. Public hearing and second reading of the bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as 103 Main Street, the premises, to White Trading Corp., doing business as Cheese Importers tenant. And David Starnes has a short presentation prior to your public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of the city council. This is a quick recap from a presentation from two weeks ago. The city of Longmont would enter into a lease with Cheese Importers to open a retail store and cafe at 103 Main Street. The location of this facility will be an anchor site in the callous for our First and Main Transit revitalization plan currently being developed. The Cheese Importers retail store currently draws more than 60,000 customers annually to this portion of downtown. Would help activate this site on Main Street. It would be a significant draw to the downtown area. And the city would benefit other retail stores and civic uses. The location of Cheese Importers at First and Main also supports the Longmont Downtown Development Authority's Arts Entertainment District goal by providing more experiential retail opportunities. Cheese Importers' strong growth potential also provides new retail sales tax revenue and retains existing jobs in the city with possible retail growth. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I also have Mark Myers, the Sales Manager, and Garrett Palacek, the Operations Manager from Cheese Importers, is available to answer any questions as well in addition to me.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to give the staff a chance to clarify. I received an email this week and the question was brought up by neighbors who own property there. Why wasn't this property put on the market and other people given the opportunity to bid on the lease, so to speak? I know the answer, but I just want to show that I actually read my email and give you the opportunity to clarify for folks.
Sure, thank you. Cheese Importers originally approached the city of Longmont back in August 2011. Mentioned to us that their lease at their current location off of South Prep was expiring in June 2012 with no option to extend. They have a strong desire to remain in the city of Longmont with a particular interest in the downtown area. So they asked us to engage in a process to help them find a new location. So they initially mentioned 103 Main, just given the historical significance, the interest of the building and its location. So we said, sure, we'll consider that one as well. We also will look at some other properties. So we went through a process several months. We looked at a dozen other properties. It came back to the preference being 103 Main Street. I checked with our city purchasing rules and regulations. It's similar to other properties where the city owns facilities where we don't have to bid out the process. So this is an opportunity that we thought we would look into. And as long as it conforms to the existing city codes and regulations, we move forward.
Any additional questions? Okay, I guess I'd like to open this one up for a public hearing. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bree Irvin. I probably have to give you my address. It's 1907 24th Avenue. This isn't actually why I came to this meeting. I didn't know about this until just now. But I just want to say that I think it would be very, very awesome if the Cheese Importers were on Main Street. I think that it would be a huge draw to downtown. I think that downtown needs more amazing businesses like that. And I urge all of you to say yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close public hearing. Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Mayor. I'm also very excited about this project. And I think that this is really one of these first-level catalyst projects that had been talked about for the southeastern renewal area and other urban renewal areas in the city since maybe 2005. So that being said, I would move to adopt ordinance 2012-13.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Mayor and council, we're now ready for section nine of your ordinances, I'm sorry, your agenda. It's consent agenda and introduction of reading of ordinances on first reading. Item 9A is ordinance 2012-14. A bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Couster Property, the premises, to Jim Wilde, tenant. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 13th. Ordinance 2012-15. A bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Echo Property, the premises, to Patricia Echo, tenant. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 13th. Ordinance 2012-16. A bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Bolander Property, the premises, to Tom and Diane Seaman, tenant. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 13th. 9B is ordinance 2012-17. A bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a portion of the public alley generally located north of 15th Avenue and east of Main Street. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 13th. Item 9C is resolution 2012-09. This resolution is the one that was substituted during your previous agenda item. And it is authorizing the purchase of the Collins property for open space purposes. 9D is authorize the mayor to sign reciprocal conservation easements with Boulder County for the Highway 66 Regional Detention Pond. Item E, as added to your agenda tonight, is ordinance 2012-18. A bill for an ordinance extending the moratorium on accepting or processing land use applications, permit applications, or other applications seeking approval to conduct oil and gas extraction or related operations within the city limits. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 27th. And 9F is resolution 2012-10. And this resolution is approving the lease between the city and Circle Capital Longmont LLC for the museum storage space. And as you can see, that item has to do with the fact that if the Cheese Importers moves into 103 Main Street, that we need the place for those items that we have stored there for the museum. And Mayor, I would request that you remove items B and C for short presentations or discussions. All right, can we have a motion? Mayor Protan Santos.
Thank you, I would move the consent agenda minus items 9B and 9C.
It's been moved in second. Councilmember Levinson.
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to take 9E off the extend the moratorium, please.
Okay. I guess I'll second that. Okay, so I guess we'll go ahead and... Councilmember Levinson.
Oh, I guess we have a motion on the floor. So do we need to vote on an amendment first?
Yeah, I think we do. So the first is just Gabe's amendment. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. No, the substitute, the addition to the original motion needs to be voted on first. And then comes the original to move the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, let's vote on the amendment first. Okay. That fails with Councilmember Santos, Councilmember Whit, and Councilmember Finley, and Councilmember Samori dissenting. So let's go back to the original motion. Okay, vote on the original motion. And that passes. Mayor, so the first item removed was item B. And we're going to have Joni make a short presentation on this item. And I believe there are questions from council members.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Joni Marsh with Economic Development. The item 9B is a vacation of a portion of Ridifway in the alley located behind the Armory on Main Street. We have had some ongoing issues in terms of code enforcement and illegal dumping in this area that have been ongoing now for over a year. And so in working with code enforcement and our public work sanitation staff, we talked to the National Guard folks about perhaps initially doing a use of public places, letting them extend their new fence that they were going to put up and take over this part of it so that it would be included in their parking area. They came back and indicated to us that they had taken that up to... They came back and indicated to us that they had taken that up to the chain of command, and that was not a route which they were able to go down with us. So they requested if we would take a look at actually vacating that corner, and then they would take over the maintenance of it and go ahead and build a new fence. So we took a look at it, there aren't any utilities in it, it certainly solves what's been an ongoing problem for code enforcement and our sanitation folks in picking up illegal dumping. And so that's the request before you this evening. It has been reviewed by the DRC, and all of the criteria have been met through that process, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, hi. I read the item in the packet, and I have difficulty with this item. It just seems like we're using a sledgehammer to solve a problem that a regular hammer might solve. And while it may not be optimum for the armory to, to employ the use of public places permit, at least it allows the city to protect our right-of-way interest. I, I just, I think that there may be an extra space there to, for people to leave items they don't, they don't want anymore, but that, that situation occurs in almost every alley in my neighborhood in Historic East Side, and I think it might create a slippery slope of other property owners in multifamily plexes maybe to come along and say, I want to take a portion of the city's right-of-way along an alley and fence it off so that I don't get illegal dumping either. I also recall a situation a few years back where Butterball had wanted the city to vacate the entire right-of-way on Emery Street, and looking back, I think it was wise that the city did not give up the, the street. And I'm also aware that the armories have been up for sale, and, you know, I would be happy to maybe adjust our policy around the use of public places permit to maybe make it more than a year-to-year permit if that unsurety is what was causing them concern around that issue. And, and the last item really is that what we're finding in the rehabilitation of the downtown alleys is there's a distinct advantage in a block to have a little space where you could group communal dumpsters, and that's something that's really a roadblock into the downtown alleys that are being renovated right now. Since this is an opportunity area for redevelopment in the midtown area, I would suggest that to preserve future opportunity, it might be more prudent not to grant this right-of-way and, or vacation, vacate the right-of-way and, and simply work towards another solution. And, and I just know from experience that you might close off one area, but somebody's going to find some other little corner to dump in. So it'll just move the problem to another area of the neighborhood or another area of the city without coming up with a, a long-term solution to code enforcement. So I would move that we do not move this item on to second reading.
Okay, it's been moved to seconds. Any further discussion? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. I would say that the, the right-of-way easement that Butterball was requesting was a, a street, not a parcel of, small parcel of land.
Correct.
Okay, it fails with Councilmember Bagley, Councilmember Santos, Councilmember Coombs, and Councilmember Finley dissenting.
Thank you, I would move ordinance 2012-17.
Passes five to two with Councilmember Samori and Levinson dissenting. Mayor, the second item removed was item C, and Dan Woolford is going to make a short presentation on this potential acquisition of open space.
Mayor Coombs, councilmembers. I'm Dan Woolford, manager of parks, open space, and greenways for the city, and 9C in front of you has to deal with the land acquisition of the Collins property. The Collins property is approximately a little more than 43 acres just to the west of Sandstone Ranch. We've got some slides, can we cue that, please? A little bit distorted, but you can see where the Collins property lies just to the west of Sandstone Ranch, and to the north of our Sherwood property, and to the east of the Pachell property, kind of like as, as I have it in the communication, that donut hole. So we're filling that, that void, we've been working with the family, and we're pretty excited about being able to acquire this, this parcel. The parcel is, was reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board back in December, and they approved it unanimously and are making that recommendation to council. The price per acre is roughly $27,000 an acre, including water, from a market value, a couple of the other acquisitions that we've done over the past year or so, significantly less from that perspective. The Collins family is here tonight, and I'd like to show you a little bit, one of the things we're going to do with this parcel, once we've acquired it from the Collins is, is annex it into the city, then what we will do is do a lot subdivision of four and a half acres, and quick climb that deed back to the Collins family, and in turn, we will retain a conservation easement on that with limitations of development on that lot. This photo depict, will depict the layout of that lot that will be, then retained by the Collins family, providing access to them as well as ourselves, and this is approximately four and a half acres. Just to give you a few other photographs and pictures of the property to depict the qualities of the property. This is looking into the Collins property, looking west, obviously, into the pasture and looking into the riparian corridor. This is the wild turkey moving to the, into the Collins property, you can see recently being bailed and the wild turkey moving in that area. Again, a great connection, wildland corridor, that connection in the preservation of the riparian properties.
Mayor, I'd only ask, Dan, recently being bailed? In the winter time?
The picture was recently being bailed. Thank you, Mr. Peddle. This again, I'm actually standing on the river, looking across the Collins property, looking back at Sandstone Ranch, and finally, the riparian area. So again, this property fulfills a number of the criteria for the Open Space Fund, including riparian and wildland protection, wildlife protection, agriculture, community buffer, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, as well as two members of the Collins family are in the audience, if you have questions of them. Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So the magic question of the night, and you should have expected this, who owns the mineral rights?
Well, the Collins do, obviously, but we will at, at the time of acquisition. There is an existing lease, which we've talked with the family about, and we're actually having our staff currently review that there is an oil and gas lease on the property, but we feel that it's not a valid lease at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Witt.
Just a snarky comment, you said that you were standing on the river, so are we to infer that you walk on water?
Just. I reframed. Councilmember Levinson.
What do you see as the, the conservation easement? How many units would be available on this property for development?
Well, the way the conservation easement will be, it's limited to a single residence. You know, likely in Weld County, there's always that possibility that it could have been split to many more, as many as nine.
So a single family residence, and then, you know, there could be a barn or a couple of outbuildings?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, likely, and again, that will be depending upon the zoning that we place on that, and it's likely to be intended that we will zone this as agriculture, so to allow maybe one or two large animals, horses in particular, on, on this parcel.
And then, can you describe what the dedication of water rights are?
The Collins is our.
What the water rights are with the property case?
Yes, again, Mayor, councilmembers, we are acquiring the historic water rights on this property, and we've agreed that we will lease those water rights back to the Collins and the owner for a period of 10 years, to be renewed if they are appropriately using that water right. So we will continue to maintain control of those water rights over time.
And just to satisfy other questions that might be in the audience, that there would not be the, there's not a provision that, that would include the sale of those water rights once they're granted from the city, for any other purpose but to be used at that property?
Mayor and councilmembers, as we acquire those water rights, the only way that they can be sold, it would be through a vote of the general public, according to city charter.
Great, thank you. And I just want to say thank you for the Collins family, and would you please spread the good news that the City of Longmont works with people, and we work collaboratively with property owners?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We haven't voted yet. No, just kidding, just kidding. The, my, this is just for educational purposes. What can be done, once something is acquired using open space funds? What, if anything, can be done with a property in terms of development, or whatever? Or is it just basically set aside and it's untouchable forever?
Mayor Coombs, councilmembers, the Open Space Fund was set up under ordinance and back in 2000 that developed the criteria for the open space acquisition. It limits the use of those funds for land acquisition related to preservation of wildlands or riparian wildlife, agriculture, buffer, trail corridors, and the development of district parks. Again, district parks are those parks that are based around a natural feature. Some of the good examples where that would be Golden Ponds, the southern half of Sandstone Ranch Union Reservoir. So with the open space funds, we have and will continue to develop trail corridors and the development of district parks, again, primarily looking from the district park perspective as passive recreation opportunities.
And, and in the future, if we wanted to develop on it, what would we have to do? Like buy it back with funds from a different pool? Is that even possible? Or when we make a decision like this, is it something that lasts forever?
Generally speaking, our properties are purchased in perpetuity.
So forever?
If there's a, if council determines a, a greater community need, there is a process by which we can dispose of the open space, which would require review by Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and a three-quarters, I believe, or a majority vote for council for that transfer to happen.
So it's possible?
It's, it's possible. And then whatever funding source or revenue generated from that transfer then would be placed back into the Open Space Fund.
Thank you, you resolved my concern.
Mayor Protan Santos.
Thank you, I would move resolution 2012-09.
All right, let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Mayor and council, on that last item, I think it's been said, but I want to say it again, this is a great acquisition for the City of Longmont. It complements Sandstone Ranch, and it preserves the St. Green Creek along that quarter that we've been trying to preserve for many, many, many years, and I think it's a great, a great opportunity, and I'm glad that we took advantage of it. The next one will be introduced by Phil Greenwald, and it has to do with RTD.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Phil Greenwald, transportation planner with the Economic Development Department. The messenger is back. But this time, I'd like to take a message from you to RTD, if that's possible tonight. So tonight, we're really going to look for the, the official City of Longmont comments back to RTD. We told them we'd have them do back to them by, or they asked for, for them back by March 1st, so we're working on that deadline. We're planning on providing a letter from the mayor and the city council back to RTD with these comments, if, if that's, if that's okay with council, mayor and council. I think you're pretty aware of what the different options are. We've had a joint city council TAV meeting with RTD, we've had a couple sessions with you and study sessions, so, but if you'll please indulge me, I'll go through them one more time. Basically, RTD provided us three options a number of months ago, probably the beginning of January, I would say, is when we first saw these options. The first option is to, really when you boil it down, is to delay the program, or the Northwest Rail portion of the FastTrax program, they're now telling us to 2024. And so Northwest Rail would be the only piece of FastTrax that would be delayed under that number-one option, and they would try to get it done by, four years after they're, they said they'd get it done in 2020. And that only comes with the extension or the increase of a tax. So FastTrax 2 would have to be passed, four-tenths of a cent is what they're talking about now. They're also talking about putting that on the ballot in November of this year. So if that passes, the delay would be four years to 2024. Option number two that was presented by RTD is to delay it, delay the Northwest Rail for those four years again from 2020 to 2024, again, assuming that a tax passes this year. But all the rest of the unfunded corridors will also be delayed six months so that they could provide us bus service in the interim while we wait for this rail to be built. So that's option number two. Option number three is the bus rapid transit only option, so this one eliminates rail from the discussion and from the FastTrax plan. A ballot in two, in November of 2012 this year would state something to the effect of changing the plan, changing the FastTrax plan, and only, and only doing bus rapid transit in the, in the Northwest Corridor. If you have any questions about that too, I can answer anything that you have regarding that. The implications in the council comm, we tried to put together some implications, that, you know, what happens if option number one is chosen, what happens if option number two is chosen, those both have the rail component still, so those are, obviously, those options keep the, keep the railroad, or the rail piece on there, the commuter rail. Option three is the one that obviously gets, that eliminates the rail. We did tell you also that option one has been basically eliminated by the other folks in the corridor, so the rest of the US 36 and Northwest Rail members have already said that option one doesn't work, they need to get something for, for that, and that's in the letter at the, at the back of your council communication as well, that letter that was sent from George Gershfeld of Boulder County, and, and the rest of the US 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, and the 36 Community Solutions as well as Longmont, signed on to that, that letter that, that talked about where they stand on that. Again, we also talked about in the, in the communication that if you do pick, if you support an option that does not include commuter rail, we'll have to start working with RTD staff to see what that looks like. If that option is also selected, we'll have to go through a whole, what's called an EPA process, or environmental process, to put that, get that, basically vetted through the environmental piece of, of work that needs to be done, because this is something that hasn't been looked at before. The, the rail all has environmental studies behind it at this point. The other things that have gone on, and I'll try to keep this short, but we do have members of our Transportation Advisory Board in the audience tonight, I believe there's four members with us tonight, and they held a special meeting a couple, well, last week, and they did come up with a recommendation, and I've sent out the, the TAV summary sheet for you to review. Basically, though it boils down to the Transportation Advisory Board moved and approves on a 4-3 vote, the idea of moving option four, moving option two forward as the city supported option on that. supported option on that. And they did do it with conditions, and I'll just go over the conditions quickly. They wanted to see interim improvements before 2015. They thought interim bus, to the bus service, could happen sooner, and why were we waiting so long for those interim improvements for the bus? Also, all other lines should be completed at the same time as our line. We shouldn't have to be the last ones finished, so they did have that as a condition. Also, the idea of bus service to the airport, direct bus service to the airport from Longmont included, that was a big one, and I think we've talked about that before as well. Also, the idea that a guarantee, that there'd be a minimum of 30 to 60 minute, or 30-minute, oh, excuse me, let me start over, a guaranteed minimum of 30-minute peak hour, peak service in those peak hours of commuting, and the 60-minute off-peak service beheld, those headways be assured by RTD to Longmont and the rest of the corridor for at least five years. So, that, that would be on the rail for five years. One other item is when we had our joint meeting with the RTD, one of the questions that came up, and I think one of the questions that's come up quite a bit, is how do you, how does Longmont as a city opt out of RTD? So, we've been in discussions with Scott Reed, he was one of the attendees at the meeting the other couple weeks ago, and he wrote back to me, he has not received anything from legal that's formal yet, but he did have a discussion about the process. Number one would require specific legislative authority permitting a formal vote by residents that would require a majority approving withdrawing from the district by a cer, by date certain, was one of the conditions. Number two, the entity that voted this way would not receive RTD service or any additional capital improvements from RTD. And number three, financial responsibility for the DNX area would remain, in other words, any responsibility we have to any bonds that are, that were currently voted, and that was mentioned at the meeting, would still be the responsibility of the DNX area so that bonds would still have to be paid off. So, those, those are the items that I have for you tonight, as far as talking about kind of where this is at and what we're looking for as far as some of the council direction on, on how to provide comments back to RTD. Again, we do have members of TAV in the audience, if you'd like to hear more about how that discussion went, but we did talk to them, and they, they did approve option two with a four-three vote. You could tell there was a split. Option three was a, a big factor, and I should just point out that they did say that there should, you know, if it was a gold-plated kind of bus rapid transit, they think that that may have swayed the vote a little bit, but they didn't have any assurances, and there's nothing out there from RTD right now that tells us exactly what we're getting from bus rapid transit at this point. So, with, with that caveat, they voted for, for option two.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we could have Veronica, Jeff, Bob, and Buzz, if you guys could come up, and I just want you to kind of stand around the mic here. And, and Veronica, maybe you could take the lead and expl, oh, and hi, sorry, I didn't see you, you were behind the podium. If you guys could just explain some, I, I think that, oh, my gosh, I forgot your name, Phil, sorry, it's getting late. Phil did a great job summarizing, but can you guys just explain to the rest of council and also people watching, all the different scenarios and options and things that you looked at?
Well, I guess I'd start with saying that we did keep it, that we were told that we had to pick between option one, two, or three, and pretty much option two and three. And it was voted on that we shouldn't go broader than that, because that was our charge. So, there wasn't discussion on if there should be a tax increase and all that kind of issue. So, we're looking at option two and three. One of the things we were very concerned about is whether we really getting for option three, and it was brought up after the vote. So, first, we discussed benefits of option two and the benefits of option three, pros and cons kind of, and voted on option two, saying that, basically, I would say, we voted for rail, we know what we're getting for rail, some people really would never get on a bus, and we don't know what we're getting with that bus. But after the vote went through, there was further discussion that why would we pay for a tax increase to get bus service that's cheaper? So, it's like, shouldn't we get option three without a tax increase? And that was kind of, we weren't given that choice. The choice is tax increase, and do we get two and three, and why would we pay a tax increase to get option three? So, I think that was a big part of that later discussion, and that's probably the main part of it.
Hello, Mayor and council, thank you. I, I think Phil accurately summarized the gist of our meeting. Veronica additionally, so, so I'm just going to give you a couple of my personal comments, and I have some maybe rhetorical questions, whatever, but there's an economic concept of sunk cost and prospective costs. Sunk cost, cost being time, treasure, effort, and sunk is, are those costs which we have already spent, prospective are the ones that we would look forward to spending. And when you make your decision, if you're going to make a rational decision going forward, you can only consider, you should only consider prospective costs. If you go back and look at the sunk cost, the tax money that's been spent, it'll lead to an irrational decision. You have a little bit of time on the internet, look up Wikipedia sunk cost, there's a nice summary, you could read it, and you can get that, and it, it might help you in future decisions also. Concerning how enthusiastic RTD is about BRT, it's a bit surprising to me that in the 2004 ballot initiative, that BRT wasn't considered coming all the way to Longmont. And so, you know, here we are, we're eight years since the vote, and rail is still in flux, so I'm, it's unclear to me how RTD in the next few months can put together a cohesive BRT package. Let's see, so, if, if you do choose BRT, I'd recommend scrapping this idea of this cap. So, when they, this option three includes a cap of something close to $900 million. If you could get that out of there and just say, if you do BRT, we want BRT done right. Rail up to this point has not been constrained by a cap, we just keep escalating the costs and the time it takes to do it. All the counties in the RTD district are contributing at an equal, equal rate, so disproportionately burdening those counties who would benefit from Northwest Rail is also not an equitable solution. We should all equally share in any of the burdens, all the counties, all the people that would benefit from Northwest Rail, we should, we should all be equally sharing in that burden. I, I think by that, I mean, they were going to delay some of the other lines six months, and they were going to delay us some number of years. Finally, if we do go forth with BRT, or really any of these options, I, I would strongly consider if it's even possible to look toward some type of binding agreement, something that we can get in writing that's signed by RTD, signed by the City of Longmont, so that it cannot be changed in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Buzz Feldman, my thoughts on it are that the only option that makes any sense, and none of them are, are good, is option two, just to keep the rail factor in there. And the reason I keep, hold on, keep holding on to that is that we don't have many days of bad weather here, but when we do, and we just have in the past couple weeks, traffic on the highways comes to a standstill. The rail line would go through, is fixed and placed, it continues regardless of what the weather is, it's something that people can rely on, they need to get to Denver, whatever, they've got a way to do that. That doesn't exist, that, you know, at all with BRT. The other thing to consider is that, from a personal perspective, I'm skeptical people will vote for more buses. A train gives them something more, something new, and, and train service does link us in the future perhaps to communities to the north of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Buzz. Go ahead, Veronica.
Just one last comment, just from hearing, is, and the other issues that came up with the BRT, like we talked about, what are we getting, where are we getting it? Gary had brought up that, they came, came up with the idea a couple months ago, we really do not know what we're getting where. There is no plan. So, do we get extra land on I-27? I doubt we're getting them on I-27. What is the difference between the bus versus train really if the bus is traveling in traffic? So, I think we have to spell that out, and the other thing that came up, someone says, this is the plan proposed by RTD. Within this line, and this proposal from the people that went to the BRT presentation by RTD, has this line along the Alpharo Road. Some reason the communities itself got Alpharo Road added as more BRT or priority treatments, which means if we ask for more, who says we can't get more? I don't believe. This is my personal opinion, that it's option one, two, or three, I think, for this negotiation one, because somebody else just got a new line, and I've never heard of Alpharo Road needed priority treatment until last week.
Thank you, Veronica.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Jeff Ilzmann. The lack of specificity by RTD on BRT is quite disturbing, of course. Some of us did a deep dive last week, and we got some information on BRT. I went to the library and checked out the FastTrax program from 2004. I found BRT mentioned in two footnotes in here, just saying that someday, someone may want to consider BRT. So, there is no specificity, and I don't know what we can do, but I think we need to demand some sort of laundry list of what it is, or an is-is-not diagram, saying this is what it is, and this is what it is not, because without that specificity or without that is-is-not diagram, you know, who knows what we're going to get.
Okay, I guess, I would like to start, I'll jump into Q, I guess, ahead of you, Bob, if you don't mind.
That's okay.
I was at a VNSF railroad meeting with Phil this morning, and I was real impressed with the answers that the railroad gave on why their cost, you know, went basically to, I think it was $538 million, and then the way it gets to a billion is, you know, RTD then adds their factors and rightaways and stations, but I think they had some really good reasons on the inflation. One is the federal regulations have changed a lot, and so they have this really expensive signaling system that had to be added. Then they did a real detailed computer modeling, which showed that most of it had to be double tracked to get 55 trains moving. So, I think they, they put together, I think, a pretty good presentation, and then they did some relative rough comparison to other commuter trains that they've built in Seattle and, you know, other areas, Chicago and California. And when you looked at those comparisons, even though I wasn't comparing apples with apples, it seemed relatively sensible that they weren't, that they really want to work with us, they want this thing to be successful, and they're not just digging their heels in and saying the price is this, whatever. So, I, I had a much better feeling for their position after the education and presentation I, I received this morning, and, because I was basically on, on the fence, and it's, it's kind of swaying me towards option two. So, Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As probably the only council member who rides the bus every day, those who say there's no difference between bus riding and riding on a train have not ridden a bus every day to Denver. There are substantial differences. One of them is the weather, of course, and the traffic. Also, rail lines, economic development happens along rail lines, not along bus lines. And with buses, what we have now are buses, and they get changed. They get, buses go away, all of a sudden, routes are gone. They can't do that with a train. I want my train, or I want my money back.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Phil. What happens if one of these options is approved by RTD and the initiative goes down? What happens? Are we still, and I know the answer is we're back to, to the 2004 language.
Right.
And in the 2004 language, we're, we're guaranteed rail.
That's right.
Okay. So, with these three options, they all include a tax increase. I have great concern whether or not they can pass a tax increase, especially if they go BRT. I think, it was Mary Blue that mentioned that the City of Boulder, Boulder County, you know, I, I heard whispers in the winds that they were more inclined for BRT than they were for rail. And for the last four years of being on council, I've kind of seen that go, especially with one commissioner, Boulder County Commissioner Will Tour, pushing for BRT and just basically saying, we don't want the rail. So, that always concerned me, because there was such strong unity along the Northwest Corridor that the commuter rail was coming to the Northwest section. I've lost faith in RTD. A guarantee, you know, Phil Washington mentioned at our, at our meeting, that we would, we would see guar, almost a guarantee regarding bus rapid transit if that were to, if that was the option that the RTD board chose. We're guaranteed rail right now. What makes me thi, I, I, I don't have the faith, one, that they, they are going to make good on the guarantee they already owe us, and then we're going to, they're going to ask us to, to vote for a tax increase for more cuts that they, they're already giving us, but they're going to guarantee, and we're going to get bus rapid transit with some sort of guaranteed times. I don't buy it. I don't buy it at all. I think the, the RTD, RTD boards have made up their mind that we are going to not get the commuter rail that the, this community voted for, which I voted for. I thought The Times called it a very good job with a great train robbery in their editorial, because that's what it is. And as I said, we paid into it, it's time for them to deliver. And I'm, you know, whether or not we pass, one, two, or, you know, one's out, great. Two, I'm sorry, I don't think the other, other communities who already have theirs are going to say, no, we're, or they're getting very close to getting theirs, they're not going to go for that at all. You know, I, I see fragmentation of the, the unity that we once had with the communities along the Northwest Rail, especially with our own Boulder County Commissioners, and then with the regarding area of RTD. With the bonds, that we're going to be on the hook for the bonds if we secede from RTD, I see a breach of contract. The contract that the voters of this community pay, that voted for in 2004, they're not delivering and have not delivered with more cuts than, than we have seen, and I, I don't, I really don't care what, what they tell us, we've seen our unfair share of cuts, or not being able, or waiting an hour or two hours in Denver, waiting to get back home to Longmont for those riders that are, that are traveling on, on those buses. My faith in them is no more. I, I don't even know, you know, I'll vote for one of these, but when it comes time for council to vote for whether or not we support the initiative and includes a, a tax increase, you know, I, I don't think I or many members of this community are interested.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I had the opportunity to give RTD a call earlier this evening to see why the timeframe has shrunk so much and we're in a rush to make a decision all of a sudden. And I discovered that their staff was going to be presenting to the board tonight and making a recommendation of what they think should be. And I know they've had a couple of charrette meetings for the BRT, and I don't know when you were involved in it, but I was told that it has evolved and that there will be BRT on 287 as well as 36, but they couldn't really give me a detailed description. Now, I was supposed to get a copy of the packet via email, but since we started early tonight, and the file was eight megs, I think my system blocked it because of the size. So, I'm, I'm of the impression- So I'm of the impression that regardless of what recommendation we make tonight, they've already made their decision. And I think what I heard, and I could be wrong, is that item three is where they're leaning, because they are getting support from other communities in Boulder County I'm of the opinion, along with the recommendations that were made earlier, that as a community and as part of the district, we voted for the rail, and we should have the rail delivered. And I know what they've said about us potentially if we cede from the district, but I believe one other community has already done that, Castle Rock. Do we know what process they went through or what their liabilities are?
Mayor and councilmember, the city of Castle Rock did this before the FastTrax vote, so they weren't tied to those bonding.
Okay.
It's as that we evidently are now, according to RTD.
Well, I'm not an attorney, and Eugene, I'm sure, will correct us if we are out of step, but I agree with Mayor Protem Santos that if they don't deliver on the original promise, there would be some breach, and we should be able to get out of it without being penalized long term. But it seems that they're asking us for input, but yet they've made their decision. And what really surprised me too is I got an email that their Citizens Advisory Board is doing an outreach and is going to be meeting in Longmont on the 21st of March, well after the RTD Board makes their decision of how they're going to move forward. So I don't understand why they're even bothering to come here as an outreach. Not that you would know, anyway.
I guess I'd like to weigh in just briefly. I guess I'm more under the impression that RTD is leaning towards number two. I could be wrong, but I don't know. Councilwoman, Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, I'm still a woman, that's okay. I, you know, having grown up in the Northeast and, you know, people in New Jersey take the bus into the city, people in the suburbs of New York take the train. Everybody knows what happens in New Jersey. No, very, very highly regard the state of New Jersey. But I also believe that having been a commuter in a car going down Denver during commute hours two days last week, 25 will be unbelievably gridlocked, not just around 120th, but all the way back to 52 in the next few years. And I think the rail is dependable in bad weather, you know, unless a cow strays on the track, but I think they've solved those problems. And I think that, again, Councilmember Finley's comment, it's a fixed place, it's surety for the development that would cluster around it. And frankly, I don't understand what kind of BRT. Mr. Ilson sent me, and I think the rest of the council, you know, a document that describes different BRT proposals, and one of the places in the document talked about a BRT system that would be specialized buses running on specialized rubber tires in a track that would be almost like a fixed track. And there, to me, there's, again, so many different models of BRT out there without the specificity to say that there's a dedicated lane, or is RTD going to build a lane with CDOT and start selling, you know, toll tag access in a dedicated BRT lane? The unpredictability of that factor doesn't ensure a quick trip to Denver or anywhere else. And I did also talk to a council member from Golden, Marcia Claxton, and we talked about this issue with the rail and our choices in this. And she said the community of Golden, they have their light rail, but they are in full support of our rail getting built, their community. I trust a council member when they say that. So I think that there are possibilities out there that other cities and other decision makers on councils realize that unless the entire system is built, it's not really going to, you know, ultimately do the people of Golden any good if they have their one little trip into Denver, but they can't come up by rail or a quick means to the northernmost end of the system. The other factor was Councilmember Joan Schaefer from Loveland speaking at the RTD meeting with the possibility that the rail portion from Longmont is missing. It's unlikely a system could be built, the dream team, if you will, from Cheyenne all the way to Albuquerque, running through Denver and through our corridor. That, to me, would be a huge advantage for transportation options in the future. I would advocate for option number two, and I think that we just hold people's feet to the fire. I don't think anybody would agree that any of these choices are palatable, but I'm not willing to, on a wing and a prayer, vote for BRT when we don't even know what flavor of BRT it is. You know, is it vanilla, is it chocolate, or strawberry, or Neapolitan? I mean, and it's unlikely that, to really run a great BRT system, there's enough political will to do it. I mean, the one example I've touted before is, you know, a presentation I saw a couple of years ago on how the BRT system got built in Istanbul, Turkey, bridging the, between Europe and Asia, and how it was the sheer political will of the mayor of Istanbul actually taking a full lane of traffic and telling cars they could not go on that lane any longer. And I don't know whether or not there's that amount of political will to make a real BRT system that's efficient and very fast work. And I'd more rely on the alliances of the rail, and knowing that the city of Westminster stands with us, and that in order to get our vote, RTD is going to have to give us some increased bus service as well. And I'm interested in what Veronica Summers noted about, all of a sudden on Arapaho, there's a BRT now. I mean, I'm wondering how many goodies RTD is going to throw into the mix, how many little pieces of candy to get people enticed to vote for the tax increase, and then how much they're really willing to deliver. They probably all know that already, and they're just not going to, it's like playing poker here. They're not revealing their hands, and we don't really have very much of a strong hand to draw on right now. So I would go with option two and just hope that everything is not predetermined. And I think there's still room for us to scream, isn't there? If, you know, it's not what we want, then there will be consequences, I imagine RTD will recognize immediately. So I would, I would, I'll let Councilmember Bagley weigh in, but my movement, I'm not making an official motion, is to look at option two.
Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, am I not happy. This is the consensus of everybody in the RTD District, is that there is no consensus. I am very concerned that it is nearly March, and we do not have a plan, we do not have endorsements from chambers of commerce, we do not have people excited by any of these plans. We're talking a lot about two or three. What we haven't really talked about is, you know what? We are not going to endorse any of these, because none of them are good. And I'll just give you my thoughts on options two and three, and then kind of explain my thought process on none of the above. So, option number two, I do not believe that the RTD District, if that is the option that is put on there, I do not believe that voters are going to go for that. Big concern for me with option number two is putting the success of this project in the hands of Burlington Northern, an entity over which we have no control. You can absolutely guarantee the price is going to go up at least 50%. I would stake a year's salary on that, that that price is going to go up, because we are creating a project that is too big to fail, and they know it. And so because of that, that price tag is going to go up, and we're going to continue to pay it, and we are not going to get that rail by 2025. And they'll be very sorry, and it's not our fault, but that's what's going to happen. It is not fiscally prudent to go with option number two. Option number three, the only way that I would feel comfortable with option number three is if we had fixed Rapid Transit, which would be fart, not bart. I can imagine the yard signs now, it could be just a little cloud, and it's not just hot air. But it's, I have it all planned out. It all stinks. That's right. We're in a mood today. What we would want to make this worth our while would be the gold standard, and that is not what they're proposing. And in fact, they are capping us. We will only spend this much, as was very eloquently stated by Veronica, how come, or perhaps one of the others, you know, how come it disguises the limit for option number two, but if it's option number three, we're going to hold it at this level? That's not fair. So it brings the project under RTD's control, but that doesn't make me feel any better, because I know that it will not be what we would want. So I logically can't choose option number three, if you understand my reference to Princess Bride. So I am disinclined to be used as a statistic by RTD in their decision-making process, because they have not given us any options that are fiscally responsible, that are palatable to our community, give our community what we want, and there's no consensus, there's no trust. And I believe that it doesn't really matter what RTD is going to choose, because this is going to fail this year. I believe it's going to fail, because they do not, they have not put the work in necessary to make it work, because they place too much trust in Burlington Northern. We have not been given enough information, we have not been given enough time to process this information, we have not been given enough time to have our concerns addressed. And at the very core of this is there is no accountability in either of these, in any of these plans, and until I see accountability, I will not give my stamp of approval to anything. And I want a butt to kick, and unless I have a butt to kick in writing, I am not going to give my support. So I would move that we say none of the above.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mr. Rocha, did you get that quote? "I want a butt to kick." And, what was it, Katie?
In writing.
In writing, okay. The, thank you, Katie, for keeping me off the front page of the paper tomorrow.
Is I still young?
I oftentimes clients will use the phrase, "The moment you realize you've made a hiring mistake, act." And one of the way, and that applies whether you're in a marriage, whether you're in a partnership, and the way you know you made a hiring mistake is if you ask, "Well, if you had to do this partnership again, would we?" So I have some questions. I've heard the phrase quite a bit, "Well, if we opt out, we're still on the hook for the bonds." Well, if it's only $5 a year, I don't care. You know, if it's $5 million a year, I don't care. I asked Jim Golden, and my understanding is that $8.2 million is what we give to RTD. Yesterday, bought a new car, I paid RTD over 300 bucks. That's a lot of bus rides. I don't use the bus. And so my definition of holding your feet to the fire, I guess before I say that, is do we know, first of all, how much the bonds are and what our share is? What are we paying every year on interest?
Mayor, members of council, I do not have that information at my fingertips, so I cannot.
Am I allowed to ask you to look, you're not, are you on the fracking team? Okay, good, you've got time, Phil. I, as one of seven, I don't know if we need to give you four votes, but I'd ask for three others to let me know. But I'd like to know what our share is for RTD. What do we owe every year? Because what that answer is will lead me to say something along the lines of, if we're on the hook for money, it's actually cheaper to keep paying it and get out and start our own bus service. And so, because they, my gut tells me they need us. I was at the Circles event last night, and I heard, was it last night, Gordon? Last night. And I heard a lot of the same things as to the reason for poverty in this town. One of it is that there are young, single moms with children. I mean, they need to use the buses. And then I hear RTD say things like, "Well, your ridership's down, your ridership's down." I don't care, if we're paying for the buses and we're paying for the bus routes, I don't care if the frickin' buses are empty. Run them, because I'm paying for it. I don't go to my neighbor's house and say, "You know what? You don't use your suburban much." I will. It's his suburban, it's our buses, it's our services that we're paying for. My definition to holding your feet to the fire is basically say, "Look, we can sit here and pull out our hair." I see clients every day come in and they want their spouse to change. "Oh, my gosh, I don't understand, he abuses me, takes advantage of me, and there's nothing we can do to change him. You only have one option: leave." And so I'm not saying that we don't get you a ride to Denver, Bonnie. That's not what I'm saying. I'm not advocating that we do away with buses. I'm saying that we should seriously consider taking the vote to the people of Longmont and saying, "Look, if you're going to just suck out $8.2 million a year without giving us what is rightfully ours, we'll pay off your bonds, fine, but we're not going to subsidize your rail and your bus service." And until we have the data, that you don't know right now, Phil, I can't really advocate that point, but I sure would like to know if it's an option. So that's, those are my thoughts. And, I mean, I think we're just foolish to trust. It reminds me of the story when I was a kid, this will be quick, it was a young Indian boy. I know, it's not even near 11 yet. There was a young Indian boy, and he was going to be, he was taking this right-of-manhood test, and he had to climb this mountain, and he spends all day climbing to the top. At the very top, he gets up there and he's looking at the beautiful scenery, and at this foot, he sees a rattlesnake. And the rattlesnake says, "It's cold up here. You're now a man. Pick me up. Save my life." He says, "No, I know you, you are a rattlesnake. If I pick you up, you shall bite me and I shall surely die." They had this debate. Well, in the end, the snake wins, picks him up, gently puts him inside his tunic, walks down the mountain. The Indian lad gently puts him on the ground. Sure enough, the snake, now worn, bites him. The Indian boy dying on the ground, holding his leg, "Whoa, my gosh, you lied to me, you lied to me." And the snake said, "You knew what I was when you picked me up." RTD, we know what's going to happen. There's no way they're going to guarantee us the ballot, they're going to provide BRT. It ain't going to happen. So the only option we have is to basically say, "Give us our train, and if you don't give us our train, we're going to opt out and do it ourselves." So I'm for number two, but my definition of teeth is, Phil, I would like that information to see if that is an option. So, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just give a little bit of information, the four tenths of a percent sales tax, that's for FastTrax, there's, all of that's going to go until the bonds are paid off. There isn't a portion, if you got out 0.6% for RTD operations, might disappear, and then you would need to assess what it would cost the city of Longmont residents paying to have a system that was going to operate better than what we'd get in paying to have a system that was going to operate better than what we get now and have a regional, well, tie-in. So there's a whole bunch of information, I think, that is going to have to be had before anybody's going to be in a position to make that decision. And then the only other thing about it, because that's going to take time, I think we do need to recognize that RTD Board is going to have to make a decision fairly soon about the APE, the Annual Performance Evaluation, that has to be done in the very near future. So with the recommendation from the City Council or not, that Board will be moving something forward for the Annual Performance Evaluation Analysis in the very near future.
Councilmember Sumori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. With that Indian story, my thoughts got derailed. So the last time, the city of Longmont wanted rail to come to Longmont, all of council went in front of the Board at RTD and spoke and required them to do it. I would recommend that on the 8th, we all go down and talk to the Board and tell them we want the rail. Period. And I think that will be more convincing to them than if we send them a letter with or without consensus. I think we need to make the effort to go down there and speak to them in person and show them that we're passionate about it, that we care about it, and we're serious in what we want.
I guess, well, I still have a motion that's been seconded that we haven't voted on yet. Do we want to have some more discussion on that original? Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks, Mayor Coombs. Just to clarify, so you're saying, your understanding is that it's 1%, 0.6% goes towards paying back the bonds?
No, four tenths of a percent is involved in fast track. Six tenths of a percent is involved in the RTD operations on the regional level.
Okay, so technically, we're on the hook for 0.4. Whereas if we opted out, we'd keep 60%, right?
Well, Mayor, members of the council...
We'd have 60% left.
If you exited and you were successful in getting out, you would have 0.6% of the sales tax.
So we'd have to give 40 cents of every dollar that we're spending. I mean, we'd get 60 cents for every dollar to use on our buses and 40 cents to have to pay off bonds until whatever.
40 cents.
So my question is, I'd like to know if the services we're getting back are worth that. That's the real question. Because even if we have to pay 40 cents, if we can use that 60 cents and build a kick butt bus system or train system or whatever, we come out ahead. And we have leverage to tell them, "We don't need you. You need us."
Mayor, I think the real question that the community will have to assess, if it gets to that point, is what type of bus system or transportation system does the community want and what is it willing to pay for? Because it would take a new tax approved by the voters to fund any type of system locally run and locally operated. So those are some big questions that would have to be analyzed as opposed to looking at it as, "We're angry at RTD right now and by guys, we know that we can do better." A regional bus system is not cheap and one that at the local level is not cheap. We just need to have real facts instead of emotion probably in point of view of that.
Absolutely. But I know, I know that we are capable of doing great things. So, I mean, we do wonderful things here in Longmont when we put our minds to it. So, uh, I'm going to wear this hat for the rest of the night, Gordon. But, uh, but, uh, no, I agree with you. I mean, we need facts. That's why I'm asking, Phil, what are the facts? And I'm not angry. I just think it's stupid if we're going to pay money to RTD when we're not going to get anything in return. So I'm going to vote number two, and yes, there is a motion on the table.
Councilmember Levison.
Well, I'm not going to vote in favor of the motion that's been made and seconded, simply because by saying none of the above, we abdicate everything to RTD. And say, "Well, we don't like the options that are presented." And yet, you know, we're not really in a position to make demands. And, you know, it's really akin to when you're adding on to your house and you've got a contractor who got the bid because he promised you the world and all of a sudden, the price of lumber and copper went up. And gee, there are those change orders and it's costing you a lot more. But are you going to leave the back end of your house open to the weather for so many years because you're mad at the darn contractor? You know? And they don't have any control over something, so they may have been a bad estimator. Maybe they didn't pass basic bath or something in school. And you're left with what you're left with. And, you know, we can sit and grandstand all we want and, you know, spit and sputter, but the reality is, we've got to come to building some alliances with other communities around us to all of us stand strong with every community getting their options. I mean, it's not just our segment. I mean, someday, we would like to be able to get to the airport directly from Longmont and not have to rely on a shuttle service that's $35 one way. And, you know, I'm not happy that the train's going to go out to the airport quicker than it's going to come here. But, you know, those are the routes that are going to pay the money, that's going to support it. So I'm not going to vote in favor of this motion because I think it's, it doesn't give RTD any new information except to say, "Well, gosh, we don't like any of these options and they don't have any room to come up with, you know, a fourth or fifth choice here."
Councilmember Witt.
Just one last thing before we vote, because we're going to vote on this, is that the price always goes down when you're walking out the door. And so I honestly believe that probably the decision has already been made. And I don't know which way they're actually, but they're not really, I'm sorry, they're really not listening to what we say. I think that they have, I've talked to enough of these RTD directors and I'm pretty sure they've all made up their minds which way they're going to vote. I don't think that this vote is going to matter to any of them other than the ones who want option number two. And so if we should go with option number two, so they can say, "Well, Longmont went with option number two." And you know what? I refuse to be used as a statistic to validate a bad choice. So whether this goes up or down, I will vote no on anything else because I'm not going to be used as a statistic. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Yeah, I do think RTD's made up their mind, but I'm not willing to give RTD the license to take away the rail. I refuse. Again, we paid, they need to deliver. And I'm not going to vote for the motion that's on. Whatever, if we vote for two, I will do it holding my nose. And basically, you know, I'll make another motion that we also put a nice little rider to it, that we expect, the money that we have sent, we expect something in return. I haven't seen it. Again, the $17 million that's supposedly dedicated to our first and Terry Station is just on a piece of paper. You know, exactly. I'd like to see a check. Let us do it. But I know that's not going to happen because, you know, it's 17 million. What's the reality of that? How much are we going to get? Five? Four? Three? Two? One? None.
Okay, the motion fails with Councilmember Bagley, Councilmember Levison, Councilmember Santos, Mayor Coombs, and Councilmember Samori descending.
I make the motion for option two.
I'll second it. All right, let's vote. Okay, it passes 5-2 with Councilmember Witt and Councilmember Finley descending.
We'll have a letter ready for you tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Hold on, Phil. I'd like to see the numbers that Councilmember Bagley would like. So I make that motion that we direct staff to bring us back the numbers regarding what Councilmember Bagley said. So that's the motion that I make.
Second it. Okay. Shall we vote?
And Mayor, just to clarify, that will be just the information from RTD at this point.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. The other thing is, the RTD Board meeting, when is that again?
March 8th.
March 8th?
Need to look into that because I know their board meets on the 5th, on the Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
When you meet, that's why we have to have those joint meetings when we do. So I'll check into that and see exactly when they make that decision. I know there's a decision on the...
It's the 6th.
6th, sorry.
And we don't have a meeting. So, you know, if people, you know, what Councilmember Samori said, my calendar just became clear that night. So I would be more than willing to go to the RTD Board meeting. I couldn't go the last time due to tax season, but my, I can more than clear my calendar to let RTD know how I feel.
Thank you, Mayor. I also really would like to know what is the per capita collected for RTD versus the per capita spent here in Longmont? Is that possible? Is that a possible thing to get?
Mayor, Councilmember, we have tried that a number of times before and it's been a county-wide effort as well to see what, you know, that whole idea of fair share. And so typically why we can't do this very well is we know exactly how much money is spent on the local bus system in Longmont. But when we start looking at the money spent on, and that's a pretty small, small number and it seems pretty reasonable and it doesn't equate to the 0.2 million that Jim is saying that we spend on RTD per year or last year. So they always remind us that there's a regional component to their bus system as well and I think you know pretty well about that.
You know how many riders ride those buses?
But they don't know exactly how many folks from Longmont are benefiting from the bus and how many workers coming from Denver and Boulder are going to Longmont. So they get, they get a little, it gets convoluted as far as the length of the regional trip and how much is spent on a regional bus.
From what I understand, the way they take away our bus services is by tracking who rides those buses, to and from Denver and to and from Boulder. So they have those numbers. I know they do. That's what they use to cut our service.
Mayor, Councilmember, it's more of the cost that's spent on those bus lines compared to the ridership. It's the amount that they say they spend on the regional buses and how much of that portion would be something that would be spent in Longmont versus in Lafayette or in Westminster or Denver or Boulder. So that's where the costs get convoluted for trying to figure out exactly what we're getting for what we spend. But we'll bring those numbers back as best we can, but again, that's when we've always run into a bit of an issue with RTD.
And Mayor, what we should do is when RTD provides the numbers, we will have their accountants and experts come down and either defend or explain what they're based on. And that way, Phil doesn't have to try to explain those guys' numbers.
Councilmember Witt.
I would just like to move to extend the meeting till the end of our agenda.
Second.
All right. It passes 5-2 with Councilmember Bagley and Alex Samori, or Councilmember Samori descending.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thank goodness, because I had something to say. Um, you said you had the numbers for the regional bus service? For the local, I'm sorry, the local buses?
We have the amount that's spent in Longmont.
What's that approximate? I'm just curious.
Um, gosh, you caught me. I'll have to check.
The only reason I'm thinking is because 60% of 8.2 million is 4.92 million. And I'm just curious if the number's significantly lower than that.
Our consultant just did some work and we just found out that it's about 2.4 million is what's spent on the local.
Oh!
That includes the call and ride and the local buses.
Interesting. That's a lot of cushion. We could run some buses for Bonnie down to Denver for that extra 2 million. But anyway, I will anxiously await your report.
That's the part that's missing is that those millions of dollars that are spent on those regional services, they cost much more than the local buses.
Cool. Thank you.
Up to the next agenda item.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedars, Assistant to the City Manager. And I have a very quick conversation here because we had given you some retreat outlines. We sent them to you yesterday and placed them on your desk today. Basically, from the four topics that you chose last time, we really wanted to make sure that you take a look through the outlines and that this was the information that you would like to see in these presentations. You'll notice that there's also a schedule included, so you can kind of see the basic timeframes. That may shift a little bit. I have emailed Harold Dominguez to ask him if there's some portion of that time that he would like to spend with you talking about other kinds of work planning, other things. So the schedule may shift because of that, you know, a little bit here and there, as well as the availability of speakers. You'll notice that the first one is the rail corridor, or the River Corridor Project. Sorry, I had rail on my head. The River Corridor Project. And that's first up on Friday, mostly because that was your top choice and secondly because that's really the best time for those speakers. The education piece came in also on Friday for the same reasons, so that the folks from St. Ring Valley School District could be there. Saturday makes more sense for parks because that way the Parks and Recreation Board can be there. And then last is the reducing red tape piece because that is really a staff conversation. So I'm here to get any feedback that you have on the outlines and that's it.
Councilmember Witt.
Overall, I think it's great. Just a quick question of my councilmembers. What would you think if we spent like a little bit of time calendaring? I know that sounds boring and awful, but it would be really nice if we would say, "You know what? We're going to take this week off for Thanksgiving. We're going to take," so that not only ourselves but staff members could plan to take vacation. Also, I'm sure they already do that. But also, we should factor in CML, all these different things. But, and I think going forward in the future, when we do our retreat in January, it'd be great if we could just plan out at the beginning of the year, "Oh, guess what? Spring break is this week. Let's plan that we're going to take this week off." And I know things come up, but it would seem if we would spend like 15, 20 minutes and plot out, "Okay, these look like reasonable dates to take off." Would you guys feel like that would be time well spent?
Councilmember Levison.
You know, I think that's a good idea, but there's other stuff that will come up that, you know, we may want to adjust calendar. One thing in particular is I would like to get some feedback on when you schedule coffee with council because for the second year in a row, I was scheduled for like the worst week for me all year, which is following two back-to-back days in Denver all day for policy that last week of February. And then unity of communities always that week. And so, you know, I'd like to be able to maybe do a little calendaring as far as planning out coffees with council and that sort of thing. I think certainly putting those major events is a good idea and also maybe budgeting some flexibility into if we need to have any extra meetings for, you know, big topics as they come up. So I would agree with that. So would we be able to do that at the tail end of the retreat and the look at the work plan then? Is that what you're suggesting, Councilmember Witt?
Anytime. Anytime, yeah.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I assume it would be... Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, I assume it wouldn't be no problem to have the calendaring conversation. Some of the coffee with councils are already set, but they're not advertised. So we want to make sure that everyone has an equal amount of coffees with council and then we spread them out all over town, all that kind of stuff. But we can bring the remainder of the schedule in case you'd like to do some switching for the rest of this year. And next year, we can absolutely have that conversation.
Yeah. And then the other thing I would like to add to the education piece is there's nothing that addresses adult ed. And I understand from someone from the adult ed wing of the school district that there's a, adult ed is in grave jeopardy of going away altogether in the budget, the St. Ring Valley School District budget. So I'd like to, you know, add not just the bright eyes and the early childhood piece, but look at the adult ed piece with people being able to actually get a real high school diploma as opposed to a GED, which has less value, maybe for employers to look at that as a basic qualification. So, and I think we also need to maybe talk a little bit about what productive partnerships and creative partnerships we could look at with the school district. Not just, you know, are we going to have a contract for the pool to be used by the swim teams? You know, what we can do to leverage our strengths and have a real partnership and have a higher level of discussion on, you know, our vision for what our common goals are and how are we going to get there?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, I do think that the approach that Karen is proposing through here does get to that piece because first there's a little overview from St. Ring Valley Schools and then it really is what's missing and you had that kind of visionary discussion and what could we do? What's the appropriate role? And I'll make sure we add in the adult ed piece.
I'll make a motion that we accept the basic outline set by Sandy with the additions and recommendations of Katie and Sarah. Okay, all in favor? Passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's time for a final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who'd like to speak counsel this time?
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Gary Hodges. I live at 2148 Stewart Street. And I'm speaking as a citizen, nothing to do with TAB. We have a 3/4% street maintenance fund that it would be hard to argue 100% of citizens of Longmont don't directly benefit from. RTD tax is currently 1%. It would be hard to argue that 100% of the citizens of Longmont directly benefit from that 1% tax. If you run the numbers, the gentleman did earlier today, looking at our full tax that citizens pay here is a little over 8%. Right now, RTD is getting about 12 and 1/2 cents of each tax dollar that's paid on general goods. If it goes to 1.4, or excuse me, yes, to 1.4, it'll be around 17 and 1/2 cents of every dollar that's paid. I think right now it'd be pretty easy to argue RTD is a tax hog. And if it goes to 1.4%, I don't know how we would characterize it, maybe a tax brontosaurus or something along those lines. Personally, I'll be voting against any tax increase that comes on the ballot. So it's my two cents. I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you. Excuse me? Okay, yeah, my 17 and 1/2.
Could you state your address, please?
Yeah, I did. 2148 Stewart Street.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmembers, my name is Daria Laverne and I live at 429 Emory Street. While listening to this RTD stuff, even though I would like an extension for six more months of the moratorium on fracking, I do a little map here. Here's Longmont, here's Denver, here's the Broomfield Superior Interchange off of 36, and here's 287, and here's I-25. I've done my speedometer when I drive. My younger son lives in Fort Collins, way up here. And there's about an equal distance between Fort Collins and Longmont and Longmont and Denver, roughly, give or take a few miles. I can catch the flex from Longmont to Fort Collins for less than $1.50. And we heard the water or the public works about how we've done for 100 years our own system. I agree with whoever said that why can't we have a bus from Longmont to Denver, same distance from Longmont to Fort Collins, for less than 2 bucks? Would someone here on council or a group of you have a little contingency in committee and talk to someone in Fort Collins and ask them how they did it? I would love to do that. That's what I want to do. I can go see my son save my car energy and gas and blah, 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 that stuff for less than 2 bucks. How did they do it? Surely we can think of something, some way to do that. And, you know, it's a natural gas vehicle. Oh, God, sorry to say that, but it is. And that's really appealing to me as a citizen. So I hope we can consider something like that that we can do rapidly, something we can do. We got the road right there to do it. So that's all I can say. Thanks.
Thank you. Why don't you just come on down and line up? Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Carrie Chris Jainer and I live at 130 East Turner Avenue in Berthoud. I've never spoken in front of Longmont City Council before and I may not ever again, I'm not sure. But I was inspired to by a couple of agenda items that remind me that we all are connected somehow, including by our railroad track. And I appreciated Buzz Filmon's comment that the lines north obviously are sort of dependent on where they're coming from. And so I kind of want to set that aside and I can't recommend the intricacy of it and I think your discussion was very interesting. But given that we're also all connected, I'm a couple of sections north from the comprehensive plan map there that are, you know, a handful of sections north. And I'm also in the same inversion area as Longmont is, you know, as far as sort of a climate and air quality situation. And my basic devotion to this issue is from a climate change perspective. And I'm not sure if anybody really outlined the methane, the fugitive methane release problem that a study recently showed that fugitive methane releases are closer to 4%. Industry has estimated as at closer to 2%. And methane itself is estimated at somewhere between 25 and 40% more efficient at trapping greenhouse gases or trapping heat, I should say, than CO2. So I think that's something that is very important to bear in mind. And on that note too, I think that it's commendable what the city accomplished 100 years ago. I think it's important to remember what was happening here 200 years ago and the people that lived here 200 years ago and how meaningless it was that Spain and the United States were sort of arguing on a piece of paper over who lived here. There wasn't property ownership whatsoever. And I think that inhabitants, if you had a roomful of people that were of that ilk, I think they would be shocked at a lot of what we're talking about. And I think it's important for us as sort of modern, you know, society members to kind of bear that in mind because they were here for 13,000 years before 150 years ago. Lastly, I'd like to say that on the municipal utility, as I'm very familiar with this subject and I encourage Longmont's Muni to set their goal higher than 10% for renewables because 73% of your energy is coming from coal and it's part of why it's so cheap. I hope that energy efficiency and renewables can be worked together to get that goal a little bit higher. And I'll end by saying that apparently there's no problem getting coal down the rails, right? To bring it all the way around, you know, there you go. But in any case, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Susan Hall and I'm from Broomfield, Colorado, and I'm the co-chair for the Boulder Greater Greens. We have about three different growing groups, parties. One's in Denver, one's in Boulder, and one's in Fort Collins. So we take in quite a, well, we have taken in a few from Longmont, but I wanted to address the fracking issue and the wells issue. And I think that everyone should consider, but especially those who are elected officials, should consider the priority of health and safety before finances. And I went to the meeting in Aurora and I was very disappointed because the first thing they started talking about was how much money can we get for this? How much money were the oil people pay us? They didn't talk about was there more than one company? What was the companies, what were they like? Was there one better than another? No, they were just talking about how much money. There was probably one person who dissented. And she gave in to the rest of them. And it was, I thought it was very sad. And then when I went to Denver, I went to the Denver House of Reps on this same issue. And the first meeting they had there was very respectful. But the second one, people didn't even stay. There was at least one man who didn't even stay in his seat to listen to the citizens after we voted him in. And here, I find it very disappointing that I feel like that it's been communicated to me that people have made up their mind before they've listened and you've got some time on your hand. And I think that some research should be in order. If I take a college class, I'm expected to find everything I can on that issue. And I should watch every documentary I can find so that I really know the facts. And I know that Democracy Now! has tons of information on that line. I was going to bring some of them and I may if I have enough time. But certainly that should be your jobs, to know this research and to know how safe is it for your constituents and your citizens and especially the children. I think that, I used to live in Brighton and my husband worked for AMCO. And we don't know for sure if it was the oil wells that lived around us, lived around us, that were around us, or if it was his work or if it wasn't. But he ended up in the hospital for two weeks and that was the start of his respiratory ailment. And I took my son in one night, in the middle of the night, and for some epinephrine for a respiratory ailment that they have to this day, at least my husband does. And that is very likely due to the oil. And I want to read this to you. It's from someone from, who was in the cleanup with the Valdez, and she says, "Exxon assured cleanup workers." Can I finish just one paragraph?
Well, go ahead. Well, no, I guess I better not because then I've got to do it continuously, so, sorry.
Well, I will tell you that there were almost 11,000 people with neurological and respiratory ailments. And are you people willing to pay for that if that's what happens here? Because there is a chance of a spill.
Thank you.
Not that big.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. We did hear a lot of comments tonight about the issue of oil and gas wells in the city of Longmont. In particular, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers Levinson, Councilmember Bagley, for being willing to listen to the ideas, issues, and concerns that were presented to you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's still green, so I'll just talk. I know you guys are sick of hearing about fracking and I'm sorry, but it's why I came down. Oh, sorry, my name is Bree Urban, 1907, 24th Avenue. And everybody's already said it. We already know that there are risks. So far, I haven't heard of any benefits, at least not to me and my family. I don't know whose pockets are getting mine, but it's not mine. But what I really wanted to say is, listening to all of you debate the RTD issue and how frustrated you all were because it seems like RTD already made up their minds and that they're not listening and that they don't care. Sitting out here tonight, it's exactly how I felt. I feel as though you guys have already made a decision and a lot of us are here to ask you to reconsider that. And we're not asking for the impossible. We're just asking for a little more time to get some more facts. And I think that that's something reasonable that you can deliver. Thanks.
Thank you.
Greetings. What a powerful night. Mayor Coombs, Council, I'm Stradivarius, 95117. My respects to Brian and the Indian Boy. I don't know who came up with it first, but the great Oscar Brown Jr. wrote that song. "Take me in, tender woman, take me in, for goodness sake." Then it goes on through the whole story and it finishes, "Don't fret, you silly woman, for you knew I was a snake before you took me in." We, I don't know who was first, but we are a city, you know, everyone up here. Different opinions, different votes, but everyone spoke to the issue correctly. And we do have a complex circumstance and we need to take a stand. Revolt, go down, challenge Denver, challenge the RTD. What did they do back in the 90s? They built a six-county coalition and they built a football field for the rich folks who can afford to go. That same $280 million was voted down for the schools, that very same year. Propaganda, power, press, put your passions out there. Katie, Gabe, everyone. I thought you guys did great today. But we are a city, a public entity. Let's go back, Danny Kaye, The Secret Life of Walter Mitty, you know. In his home, he was Casper Miltores. He got out there and he changed the world. My first heroes were Burr Rabbit and Mighty Mouse. And I've been trying to live up to their image ever since, not very successfully, but I'm still on the path. But we could build a coalition. Fort Collins wants this rail, Loveland, Cheyenne. We can build a coalition, the cities, if we get in, use the press, use the TV, put our position forward, talk about the betrayal that we have experienced. We already put the money in. Don't put it all in the negative betrayal side, but that is part of the issue. We have already put it in. Why cannot we, as a public entity, do what public entities exist for? The whole point. Why do cities even exist if not to serve the real needs of the population? We are the population. We need this rail. And whether there is a population expense or not, buses will always go up in price. Gas will always go up. Once we get a rail, that will mitigate the extremity of inflation for energy prices. That is part of the whole reason for a rail. The other thing, it's hard to put a bicycle on a bus and you can't put very many. If we have a rail, you can have a place for bicycles. This is serious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Coombs, fellow councilmembers. I'm David Pelster. I live at 1574 Gosock Drive. I just want to make a few last comments, just in case it wasn't clear earlier regarding the extension of the moratorium to an additional six months rather than 60 days. We have over 2,000 people that don't want this in our city and it's growing every day. Also, those that dissented on talking about the ordinance to extend it, the moratorium, please look at the packet that we gave you tonight for all the reasons. There's a lot of good reasons in there. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I guess it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think all of us up here have listened to the public and we've read the letters and emails that you've sent us. We've had public meetings, we've got near feedback, and we have included all that feedback in the regulation that the staff has been working on. We've exceeded what the COGCC says is pre- We've exceeded what the COGCC says is preempted, but we've included it in the ordinance anyway. And we've put in language that states clearly that any more stringent regulations that are brought up by the COGCC or any other community would be included by reference immediately into our ordinance. So extending it for another six months may only delay the ineptible, it's not going to eliminate the ineptible. And if we have the strong language that the public told us they want in it, and we're already including by reference any more stringent regulations that come up, I don't see really what the six months are going to buy. We've, staff has been working real hard on this and they've taken all the input and all the consideration from the public. And there will be another public meeting where everybody will have the chance to comment on it. And we've stated multiple times up here that if we needed more time, we'll give it more time. And if we can get it done sooner and we don't need the extra time, then we don't need to take the extra time. We asked staff specifically how much time they needed and they told us the 60 days. Now, if they come back at a later date and they say they need more time, we'll definitely take that into consideration. So don't feel though as you're not being listened to or heard to, because if you read the ordinances real closely, you will see that every comment that was made by the public was included in there. And, you know, people sometimes come up here and make statements that are inaccurate about how we vote and what we would represent if we vote one way or the other. Well, I guess if people want to interpret that I'm in the pocket of the oil industry because of the way that I voted, that's their right to interpret that. But then I would be in good company with the governor because he is a big supporter of the COGCC. He disappointed the replacement and he put an ad, or COGA put an ad using his picture to show that that industry creates 107,000 jobs for the state of Colorado and generates $32 billion a year in income, revenue for the state of Colorado. Okay, I don't know that the city of Longmont is going to benefit from any of the drilling that may occur or may not occur. Numbers are thrown out all the time and we don't know what those numbers really are. Okay? So please, we were elected to do a job, we're doing the job, give us the chance to do it. On a happier note, we have two birthdays to celebrate. One, we would normally celebrate next week, but we're not going to be here, and that's our city manager, Gordon Petros, on the 6th of March. And our esteemed newspaper writer, Scott Rocha's birthday was yesterday. And I thought of embarrassing him earlier when it was full crowd in here, but we didn't get the chance to do it. So if you join me in singing happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Scott. Happy birthday to you.
We've got to keep our day, John.
Well, I was asked to ask our city attorney a quick question on, within the next 30 days, when the city attorney will return and review the regulations, is that going to be a public meeting at that point?
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney, I was contemplating that to be an executive session because it would involve legal advice about litigation risk, possibility of preemption or other issues related to that. Certainly council can waive it by vote of the council if they want to waive. Privilege.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Filman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alex, for your eloquent words as usual. It's time for Bonnie to name her business of the week. The business of the week this week is Leeney's Southern Cafe at 625 Ken Pratt Boulevard. I happened to eat there this weekend and had the best gumbo I've had this side of the Mississippi. It was just awesome. And my husband had a po'boy and it was awesome, too. They're only open for breakfast and lunch, but I would encourage all of you to try Leeney's.
Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say thank you to folks who come out week after week and, and participate in our, our political process. And I, I just want to assure folks, just because we don't do everything you say doesn't mean we don't hear you. You know, I think we, what we're looking for is good public policy and it's, it's, it's going to be somewhere in between. And I understand, I, I really do understand the passions and the concerns of, of folks, but there, we're going to, we're going to work on this and we're going to get good public policy, I, I promise you. For those of you who have been following this from the very beginning, you already know how much I've bent on this. How much I have listened to my community and I have become more educated and seen that reasonable regulations are in the best interests of Longmont and I'm willing to stick my neck out on those. For, I, I will not be stampeded into doing things just because I get 100 letters. It has to make sense. And so I appreciate the hard work that folks are putting into this and, and I appreciate the hard work that our staff is putting into this as well. But again, I, I'll just let you know, I'm not supportive of extending the moratorium. I will not change my mind on that. So work on Alex, he says he'll, I think that we can get it done. So, but just because I don't, I know, I know, seriously. But you know what? I have full confidence in our staff and I, just because you don't get everything you want doesn't mean that we're not listening. But we do appreciate all the time and effort and education that you have provided. Thank you.
Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll return to my normal, serious self to talk about a couple of the policy meetings I went to Wednesday and Thursday in Denver accompanied by Sandy Seder. And first of those was the legislative workshop put on by CML. And there was, I was in the session on oil and gas, they had a breakout session and Sandy went to the education session. There was a lot of interest around our draft regulations. Commerce City expressed interest in reading them because they're struggling with the same things we are. In fact, I think they're a little behind where we are. And there was some discussion and presentation from Tisha Shur from COGA. And, and then, let's see, a couple of members of the governor's staff were there in the afternoon for some presentations and, and sessions. And one thing specifically that we touched on just briefly in our pre-session was this issue of nutrient standards. And we had a present, a small presentation from the director of the State of Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And that's, there's a piece of legislation working its way through on nutrient standard. I don't know if we're going to be taking a lobbying position on any legislation or rulemaking that comes up, but I would suggest that we ask staff to, to keep tracking that. And then I'd also like to make an announcement that we had some good news from Carolyn Coleman, who's the National League of Cities federal, one of the federal lobbyist team. And the really good news is that the FCC has decided not to sell off the D Block for public safety. And in, in large part, the lobbying effort on that, the tide was turned by the efforts of the National League of Cities Technology and Communications Policy Committee. And that issue, as well as the LightSquared company issue, was brought to us first by Beth Humeck, one of our council, one of the council members in Thornton, who, you know, without some of the information from the, the Colorado members of that committee, it would not have been brought to our attention that we could help take action on it. So I want to commend Beth for her work on that and also to say that, you know, the issue with LightSquared is effectively dead. And I can, I haven't had a chance to scan it, but there was an article on the LightSquared, LightSquared issue from the technology blog called The Hill about the, how the FCC killed it. So I think we could hold a nice little funeral for it and hope that it doesn't come back again. But it was an interesting couple of days. The other issue that's going to come up at National League of Cities is one that is of importance to our city again because it appears that there may be legislation to diminish the amount of exemption for tax, unit tax-free bonds. And so that's going to be an issue that I'll track with the, the fair committee when I'm in Washington. So, and I'm intending to, to go to the, the breakfast with Senator Bennett in Udall. And if there are any other items, you know, we might want to bring up, we have one opportunity, I think, to ask a question at that, at that breakfast. So I'd be interested in, in anybody that, that might want to propose a question for us to ask.
I guess in closing with council mayor remarks, I'm, you know, I take it seriously that we need to protect our citizens. I'm real concerned about the air pollution. I think that's our biggest threat, it's the most likely to happen. And I think the biggest control we have on it is our setbacks. And that's the one area that I really struggle with, you know, the preemption and setbacks. And, you know, obviously I don't want to get this into lawsuits, but if there's anything we can do, press that envelope to get setbacks from schools. Even in Texas, they've got 1,000-foot setbacks. It's getting the distance from the air pollution makes a big difference. So just, that's my two cents on, on the whole issue. And the real problem is air pollution, not water pollution. I guess we'll go to city manager. Do you have any?
Two things to remind you of. Next Tuesday, the 6th, is Employee Recognition Luncheon that I believe you've all been invited to. And then next Thursday at 1 o'clock, we'll be cutting the ribbon on the police and sheriff's shooting range and you're all invited to that. March 6th for the luncheon and March 8th, Thursday, for the shooting range. 11:00 AM on the one and 1:00 PM on the other. You can figure out which one of those and then.
City manager, do you have any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.